Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for attending our special board meeting for the Board of Supervisors for Ventura County. Today is April 28th, 2020. Clerk of the Board, could I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza?
Here.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks? Supervisor Huber?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here. Thank you very much. So we have a quorum. I'm sure Supervisor Parks will join us as soon as she can. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please join me. Right hand over heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Next item is approval of our minutes for the April 21st meeting. If there is no discussion on this, could I get a motion to approve?
Huber, move approval.
It's been first-
Second Zaragoza.
Wonderful. First by Supervisor Huber and second by Supervisor Zaragoza. Please, roll call.
Supervisor Bennett? Supervisor Parks? Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes. And that motion has been approved. The next item is the agenda review for today's meeting. I'll pass this on to Mr. Powers, our CEO.
Good morning, Chair Long, board members. Item eight, public comment. Sixteen comment letters have been submitted. Item eleven, COVID-19 update. Three comment letters have been submitted. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisors, are there any other changes? I would like to move item number eleven up, right after item eight, which is the public comments. And if there's no other changes, can I get a motion to approve the agenda for today? Okay. It's been first by Supervisor Zaragoza and second by Supervisor Huber. If there's no further discussion, can we get a roll call, please?
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes. So the agenda has been approved. Today, we are going to start out with a moment of inspiration. Although the COVID-19 pandemic has compl- complicated, I can't even speak this morning, complicated many services and issues, it is important that our board recognizes National Crime Victims Rights Week to celebrate the progress achieved, raise awareness of victims' rights and services, and to stand for those in our community whose lives have been forever altered by crime. Not everyone knows this, but every year, thousands of Ventura, in Ventura County and millions of Americans are affected by crime. Many of these need ongoing care and resources. And we, as the County of Ventura, have designated the District Attorney's Crime Victims Assistance Program as a designated victims' and witnesses' service provider in 1981, and in response to the vision of the national commitment to the more equitable and supportive response for these victims. We also recognize the ongoing work of our District Attorney's Office in improving access to services and build public and non-public, nonprofit partnerships across the community so that we can continue to seek justice, ensure victims' rights, and inspire hope from crime victims. And the board is pleased to provide those victim services and the Family Justice Center that is open, thank goodness, and finding ways to reach and serve victims during this time of increased stress in our homes. We wanted to show victims they are not alone and can call, email, or text victims to make sure that they have an advocate that, to help them find what they need. And today, we have District Attorney Greg Totten here, and also, we have our Chief Deputy District Attorney Mike Jump. So I will let one of you, if you'd like to come up to the podium and speak upon this very important matter.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Long, members of the board, wherever you are. Mr. Powers, I'm Mike Jump, Chief Deputy District Attorney overseeing our Crime Victims Assistance Unit, our Safe Harbor Program, and our Family Justice Center. The moment of inspiration this morning is all about remembering the victims that we serve. And on behalf of Mr. Totten and the men and women of the District Attorney's Office, from the prosecutors, to the investigators, to the support staff, to our victim advocates, we thank and we honor the courageous crime victims that we fight for. Every day, their courage and resilience inspires us. Their strength, their testimony, their resolve empowers us to shed light on the truth, to hold wrongdoers accountable, and to help where we can put lives back together. And at this time, I'd like to thank each and every victim advocate working in the DA's office and in our nonprofit partners across the county, at the Family Justice Center, for their passion and commitment to helping victims of crime. Their passion and compassion is so immense that whether it is an elderly victim, a child victim, over 6,000 victims a year are served by this group with such grace and with such It goes beyond any job description that can be defined, and we thank you for that. And we thank your board for recognizing the sacrifices of all that I just mentioned and for your own voices and talents that support those that have been befallen by misfortune and through no fault of their own victimization. And as we remember crime victims and the loved ones that they have left behind at times, it's fitting now that we think about those who are right now suffering behind closed doors. The COVID-19 pandemic has made life more difficult for all of us. It is even more difficult to be vulnerable, to be a child, to be an elderly person, to be a person with disabilities, to be a battered woman who may be suffering in silence at home, when home was never safe to begin with. Many victims in the shadow of today's pandemic do not have the privacy or ability to contact law enforcement or seek other intervention services before the violence escalates. This is a moment of inspiration, though. There is hope, and everybody in this room supports and wants you to know, if you're a victim out there, that we are here to help. You can call the Family Justice Center at 805-652-7655, or now, you can text the Family Justice Center at 805-947-7981. I think there's another slide maybe with some of the contact information present.
There's a clicker right next to you.
Oh, there we go.
They've done it for you.
Thank you. All of those services are available for victims of crime in our community. You can call, you can text, you can reach out, and you will get help. You will get help with counseling, you will get help with safety planning, with housing assistance, emergency assistance, civil legal assistance, and many other ways, and it will not cost you a thing. If you are a friend or family member or neighbor who is a witness to violence in the home, just remember that you are a lifeline. You are involved. If you see something, then say something, and contact one of these service providers, or if it's an emergency, contact 911. And with that, thank you for your time and your support of crime victims. Mr. Totten, you want any comments?
We are, we are not alone in this effort to serve the victims here in Ventura County. And while crime may be down of late and bookings in our jail may be down, we know that there are, that victimization continues. And we're grateful for our partners, the Interbase Organization, the Coalition for Family Harmony, Human Services Agency, and a myriad of other organizations that make it possible to serve all of these victims, and certainly, very importantly, this board. This board has been a longstanding supporter of victim services, and we thank you for that, and we thank you for this opportunity and this moment of inspiration.
Well, thank you very much. Our board has signed a resolution on behalf of National Victims Week. And I just, I just want to state, I have received those emails of how do I help my neighbor that are screaming and yelling? How do I help a kid who is not very quiet what's going on? They're sad because they don't have the interaction with the teachers. Many people assume that the home is the safety net. Just stay home, you'll be safe, when there's other things of pressures that happen, and there's a lot of, lot of stress going on in this situation with COVID-19, which is over the limit of what we normally have with daily life. So I just think that it's really important that our community has this resources, that you are there. The Family Justice Center is just as busy. They didn't shut down because of COVID-19, and there is a need out there. And I appreciate all the work that all your staff and all of you do, because it represents a safety net for our community that's just so important. So I really do appreciate it. Supervisors, do you, any of you have any comments? I wanted to check in. We have our supervisors on business Skype, so if you can't see them here, they are still in with technology. Supervisor Parks, did you want to say anything?
Yes, I just want to thank the District Attorney and Mr. Jump. I don't think a lot of people realize that it's the District Attorney that provides us so many victim services, and his network and the CDOs, all the different organizations that assist, really do meet an incredible challenge and unfortunately need. But I'm so glad to have you here this morning to let people know, particularly in this time when we're not seeing people call in as much, but we feel and fear that there is still, you know, this incredible violence and victims out there that need help. So I'm so glad you posted the phone numbers and people know where they can call, and anyone can do that. So thank you so much for being there for victims.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much. I know everyone's so busy. Next item, we're going to, oh, Supervisor Bennett would like to say something.
Yeah, I just, I just, very quickly, want to say I really appreciate the additional reference to seeing something with, as we pointed out in our meeting last week, we are fearful that child abuse has really increased with the sheltering-at-home order. And yet, at the same time, we've had a decrease in the number of alerts, people calling in about it because they're simply not interacting as much to see it. So if people won't be extra alert, this is another good reminder of that. I appreciate the District Attorney's Office's good efforts to both serve the victims, but also alert everybody to, if you see something, say something. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other supervisors? You kind of just pop up on my screen, so I wasn't sure.
Yes, this is Bob Huber.
Yes, Supervisor Huber.
From my heart, I would just like to thank all of our staff and their dedication for helping and assisting the victims in our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is our consent calendar, our consent agenda. If any supervisor has a question, please ask it now. Else, if I could get a motion to approve. Supervisor Zaragoza? I can't quite hear you. I apologize.
Madam Chair, I lost my connection there for about four or five minutes.
Oh.
But I'm not sure if we, if Michael Jump and DA Mr. Totten are gone.
They have just left the room, but you know, I would really appreciate your comments. If you could go ahead and express those, that'd be great.
I want to thank Michael Jump, you know, and DA Mr. Totten, and my apologies because I lost the connection there for about five minutes. And I just want to thank all the victim advocates that are helping out in the Family Justice Center. And I really want to thank Michael Jump for all the good work that he's done, you know, in remembering also Greg Totten, remembering our crime victims. And I'm just sorry that because of COVID-19, we cannot get together like we do on a yearly basis. But I just wanted to share with him that I want to thank him for all the 6,000 people that he's helped out, and also thank him again for having this, calling in in English, Spanish, and Nestecco. And again, my apologies for losing the connection there for, for about five minutes. I just wanted to thank them for that. Thanks a lot.
Actually, Supervisor Zaragoza, we were able to bring them in, and they're smiling ear to ear because it was such nice, kind words. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Michael and Mr. DA Totten. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comments, supervisors. We now have our consent agenda, items 12 through 16. If there are no discussion, if I can get a motion.
Move approval.
Supervisor Huber has approved it, and Supervisor Zaragoza did a second, first and a second. And if I can get a roll call, please?
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes. So the consent agenda has been approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item is our public comments. Clerk of the Board, Lori?
So we have received 16 public comments, and I will be distributing to the supervisors and posting them online for everybody to view after the meeting.
Okay, so it will be online after the meeting, and thank you very much for everyone's letters. It's important that all of the supervisors and our public are able to hear your words, and we appreciate everything that you've written in here. So thank you very much. The next item will be our COVID-19 update, which I know everyone is tuned into because we are on week seven? I think week seven. And this is the longest disaster I believe we've had in our county for over four years. And I just want to, first of all, just say thank you to everyone for, we are in the condition of Ventura County because of you, staying home, washing your hands, keeping a social distance, just so many things that each and every one of you have been doing to put us in the place that we are now. And I'm very excited to be going down the road of reopening with our Board of Supervisors, the Governor, and our federal partners. And so with that, I will start it off with Mr. Powers, our CEO. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Long, board members, and community members. Good morning. Chair Long said it well, and it was wonderful to hear from the District Attorney's Office today, the notion of hope, and, and I think something we all need right now as our community is facing, just an unprecedented health and economic crisis. You can see it in, you know, very stark ways. There's, there's people dying in our community of this virus. And at the same time, there's also over 55,000 unemployment claims been filed by individuals and families here in our community. So this is a, this is unprecedented time for our community. But important aspects to look at, you know, we look at the number of patients every day, you know, impacted by this virus, and we see now there's 250, 215 active cases, but there's 271 recovered cases. So people are recovering from this virus, and I think that's important. And as they recover, our community needs to recover. And, and how can we do that? And I think some of the best ways is, first of all, what you're doing, which is complying with Dr. Levin's Stay Well at Home order. You're doing, you're doing an amazing job, which is why we have some of the best numbers in the state, some of the lowest incidence of COVID-positive patients in our county, and that's a tribute to you. And of course, that's not time to rest on our laurels, but to continue that even more rigorously, because it's, it's helping and it's making a difference, and we know it's coming at a huge sacrifice. The other thing that we can do is, is to focus on the Governor's steps towards reopening. And that means things like expanding our testing, our ability to do diagnostic tests, and our ability to do tracing, tracing of contacts of positive patients. And so we're going to talk some more about that. But I think that's important because until there's a vaccine or there's treatment for this, these are the best methods we have to deal with it, to contain the spread, identify and contain the spread, and that will help both the health and of our community and our local economy as well. And so what's important to recognize, I think, is that these alignments, these strategies are aligned, the steps and actions that we can take, they're going to help both our community health and our economy. So with that, let's take a look at some of those steps that we've touched on. So you can see there they are, testing and tracing. And so you'll hear a report from our project lead, Barry Zimmerman, on testing capacity. We have had some pretty significant breakthroughs with some private labs, and importantly, two state sites. They're going to be located here in the East County and the West County. Expanded contact tracing, really critical here, and we're coming at this in two different ways. One is, we'll be bringing to your Board of Supervisors an increase in the Public Health Department's budget in these areas, and it will include additional communicable disease nurses. At the same time, as the Governor has suggested, we are going to be working to build an army of contact tracers, folks who are non-clinical but who can, who are trained to do the administrative field-type work and contact people who have been contacted by positive patients. And so what that will look like is, for example, say, one communicable disease nurse can oversee anywhere from eight to 10 contact tracers, and that will help us to rapidly expand, expand that, that capacity here in our county. And so, and then that will help us with our ability to isolate as well. So testing, tracing, and isolating. Protecting high-risk populations, and that's been just a huge focus, right? And that's, we focused on it because it's the right thing to do, but also because it will help us on our, our gradual road to reopening. And it's focusing, as Dr. Levin is, just like a laser on long-term care facilities, and anybody, any patients that are positive, they're moving them out. And again, continuing to house our medically fragile and 65 and over homeless population, I think we're up over 275 now, so that's working well. That helps that population, and it helps our, our whole community as well, and also working with our, our farmworker community to make sure they're protected as well. Hospital surge capacity, we always have to make sure that that is in good shape, and the surge capacity is in good shape, and hospitals themselves, their regular capacity is at a high level right now as well. Therapeutics and treatments, most of that's out of our hands, but the one thing that we are doing, which we think is, is effective, is establish that, that plasma donor registry, and we already have 26 patients who have signed up for that. Five is the ability for businesses and schools and childcare facilities to support physical distancing, and this is so important. So we've been working to engage our business community economic development collaborative, our chambers, city economic development leaders, as well as Workforce Development Board, Women's Economic Ventures, and the Community Foundation, and to really engage and listen to our business community, make sure that they are aware of the supports that are there for them, including the Paycheck Protection Loan Program. And today, there's a really important program being launched for self-employed individuals, and this is something that's really new and different. So we really encourage people to, to check in it, check our website, check with EDC, because it's a, it's a wonderful program, and I think it's one of the first times we've ever had anything like it. And in addition, other things that we're doing, as you know, Dr. Levin's new order did create some openings for, particularly for small businesses under 10 that are not public-facing, that have limited business operations, and under the broader definition of what's an essential business in the Governor's order. And that is, we see already opening up some opportunities for business, including in particular, small manufacturing firms. We heard a report the other day that there's over 21,000 businesses in our county that have 10 or fewer employees. So we really feel like this will help with the business community as well. Dr. Levin has also mentioned that, you know, two weeks after this order, he'll do a check back in and look at the data and see how things are going, and, and we will continue to engage with our business community and work with them to, so we can be ready when the Governor announces these gradual easings that are going to happen. And ready looks like how these businesses can use best practices for social distancing to make sure that they're protecting their workforce and their customers, as when we're talking about schools, and protecting the students and the teachers as well. And so some of them, you know, very often, they have industry practices, trade groups that come up with these policies, and they're very helpful. And I think some good examples of that was like the real estate industry. When they came to us and they showed us, we can demonstrate that through remote processes, we can do, you know, virtually all the transactions remotely and minimize that, that person-to-person contact. Those are the kind of things that we're working with our businesses in partnership so that they can help develop these practices, and we can be ready when the Governor, when the Governor does begin his gradual easing. And that is so important, too, because we believe the Governor's going to announce something, if not today, maybe later this week. And we want to be, have all the steps in place, and these are the kind of things he's, he's told us he's looking for, and we want to be ready here. And one of the best things we can do, as I say, for our local economy, as well as our health, is keep these numbers down, just as we have, and continue to measure. And you can see down at the bottom, we are measuring that regularly. One of the key measurements, we've heard from Dr. Levin and Mr. Vargas and the state as well, is the number of COVID-positive patients in the hospital. So we'll be reporting that to your board and to the community regularly. We want you to see that and follow along and see how your community is doing. And so far, knock wood, that number does seem to be flattening. So those are the kind of things we're working on here. We're going to continue to just lean in with everything we have to set up these steps, put these steps in place, so when the Governor does announce his, his easing, we'll be in the best position to support our community's efforts here. And we hear it's going to be a matter of weeks, not months, which is positive, but it will also be public health and data-driven, and looking out for the safety of our community. So last comment I would make is just about our beaches, and I really want to just appreciate and thank the community for the good work you did. I know it's, we want people to get out and exercise, just as Dr. Levin says, that being active is, is important, but also social distance, and it's the challenge when people have been cooped up, and the weather is nice and so forth, but people really did a great job, and we thank you because it's really the honor system, right? You're the ones, one, each individual is helping keep our community safe. And a big thank you to our public safety leadership here in our county, our sheriff, chief from Oxnard, chief Whitney, chief Salinas from Port Monique, and chief Schindler from Ventura, did a great job. Everybody came together, got on the same page, Parks, GSA, State Parks, everybody got in alignment and worked in unison to deliver a consistent message. It was a soft closure, which we felt was the most, the best approach to take, meaning that parking lots were closed and the bathrooms were closed, and people really complied, but also, public safety and the Parks Departments and the State Parks Department worked really cohesively together to make it work. And so thank you. And we're going to need to continue to do that, because as we see, it looks like the weather's going to continue to be good. So again, continue to comply and, and listen to our, our law enforcement leadership. So with that, yes, Supervisor?
Yes, I just want to make sure that our community knows how hard Ventura County is working with our Governor, with our public health officers, to ensure that we're keeping our community safe, both mentally and physically. But also, we had conversations with the Governor's Office this weekend about talking about the economy as a health aspect also, because we need to not have people go into poverty. We need to make sure that they're able to be working. However, we have to have it in an integrated way in which businesses can safely operate and can safely have that health factor supported for our community. And I know there's a lot of urgency for so many people to be opening up our businesses right now, and just open them and we'll take care of it. However, we have to take care of our most vulnerable population. We have to take care of our critical infrastructure workers that are out there on the lines every single day. And so I wanted to make sure people know, because us supervisors always get emails, hey, we need to do this, we need to do this. I just want to let people know that we are working very integrated with our state association for CSAC and our Governor's Office to make sure that we are doing the things we need to do to follow the state and federal ordinances, but we also have our task force with your, which, ah, which you'll hear about today, which is talking about working with the businesses, the nonprofits, and so forth, and we are sharing our information. There's a spreadsheet that all of the counties have received that has our ordinances, and we're sharing information so that we can all work together to move forward. And I just wanted to make sure people knew that, because it's not just, okay, we're waiting. There's so much working on behind the scenes, and I wanted to give credit to Mr. Powers and the supervisors and everyone of our, our people that are working hard to make sure that our community is safe and still economically moving as well. So I'll get off my box. Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just want to add to what Mike Powers shared just a few minutes ago, but I just want to thank all our staff, you know, and our first responders, and, and I, I'd like to commend our staff because, you know, we've had, we've been in world news and CNN and local TV stations and commending Ventura County for the work that we're doing here, especially with our chiefs of police and all- here, especially with our chiefs of police and all our partners in our cities that are working together to, to actually, you know, abide by the guidelines that the CDC has done, and also the, the governor and our local agency and Dr. Levin. So I'd just like to commend our staff and everybody for that matter, and especially our residents for helping us out with this COVID-19 guidelines. So I just want to add that to it, that I'm proud to see Ventura County be committed. In fact, as you know, I have relatives who live in Texas, and I got calls from, from their sharing that, that we hear about how great Ventura County's doing. So I just wanted to add that, you know, and again, thank our cities for the partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Zaragoza. Mr. Powers.
Thank you. Now, I'll hear from our public health director, Rigo Vargas.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, and CEO Powers, staff. Good Tuesday morning again. Rigo Vargas, your public health director with a healthcare agency and for the county of Ventura. So today, a brief update on our numbers, they just came in, and we continue to see a slight uptick in our, in our numbers. I mean, we're averaging five, six, seven cases. We did see 20 the other day, but I believe that is due to some delays in our hospitals being able to submit the results electronically. And so I think all that has been worked out, and so the average seems to be a little bit less than that number. And in fact, today, we'll be reporting five additional cases, bringing us over just 500. So we hit that landmark of, of a little bit over 500. So it'll be 508 that we'll be releasing later today officially. And then also happy to report that almost 250, 246 precisely, is the number of new tests that were done in Ventura County. That brings us almost close to the 10,000 mark, just a little bit over 9,500 Ventura County residents that, that have been tested. And so that's a good news on that front, that there's more and more testing going on in Ventura County, and we really thank our partners in the hospitals that are doing some testing. They're not at the capacity of 200 per day as your public health lab is, but what they're able to do is a quick turnaround and, you know, work on clinical patient care in a timely, more timely manner by them doing some of the tests, and that's really helping out as well. The commercial labs are also on board and doing well, and as you'll be hearing in a little bit from Mr. Zimmerman, there's other efforts around continued increased capacity for testing. We'll, we'll stay at the 17 deaths reported today, so that's very unfortunate. That's the moms and dads and brothers and sisters and grandparents of Ventura County residents that had lost their life in part due to COVID. I say in part because all of these fatalities had an underlying health condition, mostly chronic conditions that contributed to their death, but it's very unfortunate, and our, our hearts and thoughts go with those families. So our numbers continue to do well, and people ask, you know, when are we going to finally reopen? As Mr. Powers mentioned, we are in alignment with the state, and as soon as the governor releases additional information about the phased approach to reopening, we'll be ready to also implement those changes here. I have, we have indication that the reference we made, not so much about essential versus non-essential, but low risk versus higher risk sectors, and that will be the way that we'll be phasing in the opening of businesses, schools, and other settings will be categorizing them of low risk versus higher risk and working on, on a phased approach in that way, no longer essential versus non-essential. Essential versus non-essential refer to essential services during a time of emergency. It's not that people weren't essential nor not, nor everybody's job. It was not that they were not essential, it was essential within the context of an emergency. And now we're going to be talking about lower risk versus higher risk when we talk about a phased approach. So I'm looking forward to more information on that, as everyone is, from the governor's office. And again, your county of Ventura will be ready to implement those changes when he announces them and in the timeline that he, that he does. So we, we do hope that it'll be in weeks when we can start doing that phased in, additional phased in. Yes?
Can you elaborate, what, what kind of low risk?
Yeah, that's.
It would be low risk for safety, health, correct?
Yes, it's still definitely taking into account the low risk when it comes to the transmission of the virus and also the size of, of the group.
Thank you. I just want to make sure people were clear on what that meant. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a, a quick note also to talk about, I think I referenced the doubling rate last, last week. We are at 26 days from the doubling of our numbers, and we want to continue to expand that doubling rate because that really allows for our hospitals and first responders to have time to be able to work with our clients, patients that may come into the hospital. So the longer the doubling rate, the much better we are prepared should we still get a surge. So as an example, to, on April 4th, we had 203 positive Ventura County individuals, and as I reported today, we have 503. So the doubling is, you know, much longer than other counties, and so we're doing well with that. Our positive rate is still around 5%. Is, that's very good compared to other counties. And so with our good numbers, again, we get asked often, why not lift Ventura County's stay well order? But again, we have to be not only in alignment with the state, but also we have to be very diligent about not opening too fast and then having to retract and, and enforce order of stay well, stay-at-home orders anymore than we are already. So more to come, but I'll stop there for any questions.
Rigo, can you? Thank you. Rigo, can you put the doubling rate in perspective a little bit?
Yeah, yeah. So when there's a, a surge happening like in LA and in New York, you know, the, the doubling is much lower than ours, the 26 days. And what that happens, when the surge, in a surge situation and the doubling of new cases is much closer to, to three days, that really places a burden on the healthcare system to have a doubling within two to three, five days of patients that they're seeing. And, and also in, in overall, if, if the doubling of positives in a community is, is, you know, again, two, three, five days, that doubling occurs, that means that there's rapid transmission occurring in Ventura County. And in our case, it's steady, and, and our doubling again is 26 days. And so that's, that's good news. Also, on that, the rate of transmission for COVID-19 is around two, two and a half. So every person that becomes positive can infect an average of two and a half people. And, and so that's also why this is a very high transmittable disease, and even though not everybody has symptoms and nor gets sick, it's still a very, you know, formidable virus, and that we continue to then be vigilant. But in Ventura County, again, the doubling rate is a good indication that we're doing well.
Thank you. Supervisors, let me open it up to you first, and does anyone have any questions with Rigo?
Yeah, this is Bob Huber.
Yes, Supervisor Huber, please.
Hi, I just, I actually had a comment, if I might, for Rigo. It was great to talk to you yesterday, and I'm excited to learn more about your work to put together a heat map for Simi Valley, which is a city with the highest number of cases in Ventura County. My concern is that Simi Valley residents are traveling a few miles to the east to go into the San Fernando Valley to purchase goods and products not available here in Ventura County. The heat map may be just give us the information we need to micro-target the orders to provide additional safety to Simi Valley residents. I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the residents of the fourth district for this extra effort to fight this terrible epidemic in our community. Again, thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Huber. Any other supervisors? I'd just like to say thank you. I know that the governor's coming out with some more information on our road to recovery, and that is the floor of the stay-at-home, correct? There's been some questions in our community as to the, if Ventura County has the control to just open up everything. If we're doing so well and our rates are so good, why can't we just open to that? Mr. Powers or Rigo, if you'd like to hit on that, I've gotten a lot of calls in regards to that, and I know we had a rally last Friday and so forth, so I just think that's important to explain to our community. Either one.
Go ahead, Ms. Huber.
Out polite each other here. So you're exactly right, Chair Long, the governor's order, we have to comply with it no matter what, and that's why when we're talking about these steps to reopening, these are the steps that the governor's identified, you need to be doing well in these categories in order for your county and for the state to reopen. And so that's why we're focusing on that.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Zaragoza, hold on one second, Rigo was going to add to something.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, as I said before, the governor's order can be, is, is the ceiling, your local order could be stronger, but it can be weaker or more lenient. And so that's why we are in full alignment with the governor as to implementing the statewide orders. And I understand that there might be some indication from the governor that there'll be a regional or even county approach as well, but, but it's all under the guidance of the state.
Thank you. Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just want to thank Rigo again for the excellent updates that he gives us on a daily basis, and I just, Rigo, I just want to thank you for, for, for your presentation and to keep us up to the breath on the COVID-19 updates. Thank you again for the good work.
Thank you very much, and I just really appreciate that explanation because there are constraints on our county, and it doesn't mean that our community should stop what they're doing. We should be just as good or even better, because I think it's really important to show our diligence of we know what we can do and we know how to keep ourselves safe and our community safe. So I wanted to make sure that no matter without those constraints, we still need to do the good job. Was there any other supervisors comments?
Thank you. Next is Dr. Levin.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Supervisor Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm Robert Levin, I'm the health officer. I wanted to begin my comments by saying, by giving a follow-up on a question that was asked last week, and that was by actually Supervisor Huber, how many of our COVID-positive patients in our county, and at that time, there weren't 508, there were about 475, were grocery store clerks, register, cash register clerks? And we had our nurses go through all those cases. We found no cashiers among our cases. We did find one person who was a grocery store shelf stalker, but that was basically what we found related to professions in these cases. Let me go on with a few, another unusual thing, I mean, I should say disparate thing, because I have a main message I want to talk about today, which is about masks. And I wanted to, I was asked how to, to speak publicly about how we track the direction that we're going in, and it's been touched on already, and that is, one of the things that we look at is, and I know Mr. Powers likes to look at this, as do I, our doubling time. But I just wanted to add a dimension here, is that if I remember correctly, early on in this, our doubling time was 3.6 days, and now we're at 26.6 days. I think that we should be very, very proud of the efforts that our members of our, our county have taken to make this happen. It's just, if, if we however let up because we are at what might be called a more distant doubling time, we will perhaps become what I think is possible to see elsewhere in the United States where others are letting up, and that is a resurgence and a return to a doubling time that is closer to 3.6. And we're not going to let that happen in our county. So one of the things I want, well, the main thing I wanted to speak about today is also a question that I've been asked recently, in fact, over the last several weeks, and that is about COVID-19 and the use of cloth face masks. Really comes down, I'll begin by posing a question, it has two parts to it. Should cloth masks be worn during the COVID-19 pandemic in one, either the community setting, or two, in places of business where food is served or other essential businesses? And then please note that local, state, and national guidelines, when they do support the use of masks in either of those two settings, they support the use only of cloth masks, and they recommend strongly against the medical masks, which are the surgical masks, the procedure masks, the ones with the, well, they're often have four ties on them. But they're not those more rigid with the pinch on the nose, the N95 masks. So these are the medical masks that I'm referring to, and we're not encouraging and we're not including in this question the use of these medical masks. But I'm going to return to this and touch on the reality in just a moment of the usage of masks in our county. The supporting literature for cloth masks uses language like recommends, should be considered, can reduce but not eliminate, but incidentally, medical masks is what they're referring to there, can reduce but not eliminate. They didn't study in that particular research, cloth masks. There's some evidence it may be beneficial. The CDC does come out and say, yes, you should use these masks, cloth masks. The arguments against include really observations, and that is, there was near universal use of masks in Wuhan in the flu season leading up to this pandemic, and that obviously of by, of and by itself, did not work. And on the other hand, with no masking order here in Ventura County, we've done a really good job of flattening the curve. That's not to say people aren't wearing masks and electing to do that on their own, but there's no order. In another study, there were about 1,600 healthcare workers in 14 hospitals, and the rate of infection in cloth mask wearers was six times higher than the control group. And the control group was those hospitals that said, do whatever you want. There weren't particularly any rules. So some did wear masks, but some wore no masks at all. Masks have been shown sometimes to allow the penetration of particles up to 97%. They may even increase the risk of infection, one study included. A cloth mask can contain harmful chemicals because the materials we use in our clothing and in our materials, I mean, the chemicals we use in our materials can be harmful. Many of them contain formaldehyde as an ingredient. With repeated washing, cloth masks become more and more porous, more and more permeable. Also, the World Health Organization said, no, it is not supported by current evidence. Virus-containing aerosols can pass through a cloth mask with coughing, sneezing, or speaking in a loud voice. There's no evidence that cloth masks plus social distancing is any better than social distancing alone. So based on these findings, I can't mandate that cloth masks be worn in all public places at this time. If the prevalence of disease increases in our county or some convincing evidence comes along, that guidance, of course, can change. The fact that I cited more articles, critical than supportive, is just a reflection of what we found in the literature, but it doesn't mean that more results are necessarily better results, and we're continuing to look for more results. Medical masks are not perfect either, which is to say those surgical masks, but they're better than cloth masks. I don't say that to ask people to choose them, because it's important to stress that medical masks should be reserved for healthcare workers. And this has been stated over and over again to the public. One of our public health nurses, Jeff Segovia, went to six different groceries or big-box stores in our county and tallied 600 people. stores in our county and tallied 600 people leaving those six stores. These people were at Walmart, Costco, Whole Foods, Trader Joe's, et cetera. Over 55% of those that were wearing masks were wearing medical masks. So it's important to recognize that there's sequelae associated with advising that people wear masks. In spite of all they've heard that these masks need to be donated, donated to healthcare workers who are saving lives, this is still happening. So I also want to say that I strongly support and encourage community remembers, community members to respect individual establishments and cities that have elected to require cloth masks. While I do so without reservation and concede it has the potential to do some good, the evidence isn't strong enough that I feel I can require it for entry into essential businesses either. However, the market is speaking, which is to say, people are doing this anyways, and I support that. See, one of the differences between what an individual has to decide is they decide for themselves. When someone in government, and in this case, when the health officer is asked to decide, the health officer is making a decision for all the people. And if, let's say, they're 30% effective only, these masks, this is probably a choice that I could make from time to time, or maybe all the time, that I would want that additional protection. However, this balanced against the number of people who instead are using medical masks and not letting them go, bringing them to the healthcare system, and people who are being asked to do so much already in our county, which is, that is why I cannot bring myself at this point to recommend these things. So that's the conclusion of my comments, and I'm here for questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Levin. I did have a question for you. I'm on a regional one, region one call for Cal OES with legislators and the CSAC Board of Directors. And our region one is LA, Orange County, Ventura County, Santa Barbara County, and San Luis Obispo County. Now, as we go into this road to recovery, what are your thoughts of that region? I'm concerned LA is lumped at the top, where over 19,000 positive cases. Orange County is at, the statistics I just looked at, is at 2,000, over 2,000. Ventura is 500. San Luis Obispo is 464. And San Luis Obispo is 165. I'm wondering if the public health directors are having a conversation about regional, because as the governor stated, we're talking about data. And then how do we, road to recover based on that data? And when I see that data, I look at it with not the education that you do have of are our cases a different region than perhaps LA and Orange? It's not my decision, but I would like to advocate for that because I think that those counties are more similar, San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, and Ventura. However, we do have supervisors that are on the edge, that touch into LA County. And we know that our transportation models that we see of 80,000 go out to work, 120,000 go in and out, which is stopped because we're all working from home right now. But I'm just curious of what your public health thought process of that, of regionalizing it that way, would it be different in our road to recovery?
Well, the decision to regionalize has been raised on a number of occasions. And ultimately, the answer is always the same, and that is, it's going to be the governor's office that decides how to regionalize this, if there will be movement at different rates in different regions. I do participate in calls, they're scheduled twice a week with health officers from pretty much every county you mentioned, from San Luis Obispo through Orange County. And, and we, we share information. The problem is, we share geography. And so the numbers, and we can't pick up our county and move. So the numbers are what they are, and we have to work with Los Angeles County. On the other hand, Los Angeles County is flattening its curve as well. The numbers, when we talk about the crude numbers, 19,000, they, they sound like a tremendous amount. But a lot of that has to do with testing. A lot of that has to do with the fact that they're, they're a huge neighbor. So I think we're going to wind up flattening as we get further and further along and have about the same doubling time in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you. I appreciate that because there has been a lot of conversations this last week with comparing Ventura County and LA County and Orange County. And I think it's important that our community understands the data and not just the numbers, but the percentages, and then the flattening, what those cases are. Because I could see information being rolled out, and we need to make sure we're explaining it to our community as best we can. So I appreciate your comments. Supervisors, do you have any questions?
Yes, this is Bob Huber.
Yes, please.
Dr. Levin, first, I want to thank you for your hard work protecting Ventura County residents. I do not think we can thank you enough. As a 50-year resident of Simi Valley, I'm quite concerned about the high number of cases in Simi Valley. My concern is Simi Valley residents going into Los Angeles County to buy products that are not available here in our stores. My understanding is that the San Fernando Valley has over 2,000 cases and over 350 deaths, much more than we have here. As you consider opportunities to ease some of the orders, I would like to ask you to consider allowing our frontline workers to buy products like shoes and clothes here in Ventura County. Also, there are many families with recent newborns added to their homes. These families are needing to go to Los Angeles to buy basic items for their new child. We should make these families comfortable to stay and buy things for their child here in Ventura County. That's my, my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. It's my concern, it's the concern of all of us who sit around and talk about this. It's not every two weeks, we talk about this on a daily basis. We're concerned that there are growing children in the county and that shoes are needed. There are people who are disabled who have special needs for shoes. There's clothes that are needed for growing children. So we're, we're well aware of this, and we talk about it on a frequent basis. And we're going to be, and we meet about it every two weeks. We have a formal meet and, and discuss all of these issues. Our concern is a balance between meeting this need, which we have tremendous empathy for, but also the observation that the sale, for instance, of children's clothes, at least in some places, has attracted numerous people that are going through the same clothes, touching the same clothes, sometimes even competing for the same clothes. I think some of that has diminished now, that stores are controlling the number of people inside those stores. But those are all, those are the kind of factors that we balance on either side of the scale.
Thank you, Supervisor Huber. Are there any other questions from our supervisors? In hearing none, thank you very much. And I really appreciate the openness to our supervisors' shared concerns of our constituents. And I appreciate your listening. I know we're only giving you information, but you are the end of, of our ordinance. You're the one making the decisions, and I appreciate your, your focus on our community and their safety. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Powers?
Just to echo that, as Dr. Levin said, we really look at this every day, several hours every day. It's constantly on our mind, and we're reevaluating. And Dr. Levin's very open to engaging in the discussion with, you know, Mr. Vargas, with resource management, with Kim, with county council, with Leroy, with our medical experts from the hospital. It's a very, and, you know, Paul Stamper from our, you know, our business task force. It's a very robust, ongoing discussion, and so it's foremost in our mind. Thank you.
Right. And I do, I do agree with Supervisor Bennett, or Supervisor Huber, you know, it'd be great if they could buy their groceries and their clothes that they need for their kids at the same time without shipping costs. I mean, we have to look at the budget also. People get food delivered to their house, and it's $65 a shipping. You know, what can we afford? What can we do? We don't know our sizes. I mean, it's just life, and it gets in the way sometimes. But I appreciate that you are focused on our health, and I really do appreciate that.
And these, these same burdens are burdens that we feel too. We really do. Thank you.
Supervisor Parks?
As we talk about the potential of being more targeted in our reopening, for example, of the economy, or how we address spikes in certain communities, I'm wondering if some communities, or if we're looking closely, like some communities have Walmarts and Costcos and others don't, and if those that have basically large gathering areas where people come and don't necessarily practice good social distancing, if we then see more spikes in those areas?
We have not seen a relationship like that. It's really, it's a hard thing to track because more people are in those areas, which is why those stores, of course, were placed there. Yeah, I just, I wish we, I wish we had all of that information. It would help us. It really would help us, I think, in terms of where we focused our energies in education and prevention.
And we have tracing that's coming through, and more testing, and there's more things that we'll be advancing and helping us to collect that data.
That's very true. There's, there's temperature testing, there's cell phone movement testing, apps to follow up on those things. So we're looking down the line at those things.
If I may, I also noted in the, your pros and cons of masks, that you did a survey out in front of different stores to see whether people were wearing masks or not, and then even what kind of masks. So that, that kind of information, I think, you know, is also helpful and gives people an idea of what stores aren't, you know, don't have customers practicing social distancing or are as careful as others. And this brings the question to, up to me too, of the concern for kind of a social justice aspect. We're, we're seeing like 99 cent stores, particularly as what I've heard some concerns about no social distancing at all, but then like a Gelson's that does it. So I just want to see what we can do to make sure that we apply social distancing requirements evenly across all communities.
We try to do that. We respond to any complaints that we hear about with our code enforcement or law enforcement. And we're, we're doing our best to respond to just those kinds of things.
Thank you very much. Any other supervisor comments for Dr. Levin before we move to the next item? In hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Next up, we have Barry Zimmerman, Chief Deputy Director of the Healthcare Agency, to talk about our testing expansion developments.
Yes, very good. Thank you, Mr. Powers. Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Barry Zimmerman with the Healthcare Agency. Last time I, I reported that we were in, in the active efforts to expand testing and our, our major hurdle was supplies, and to tell you, and give you an update on the progress of that to date. We've had some small supplies of swabs received through the EMS network, and, and we've received a few more, and Steve may report on that, which is a very positive step for us to replenish the, the supplies that have been used. But also, and more encouraging, has been two major developments in, in what the governor has initiated with contracting with a, a firm to set up testing sites throughout the state. That is, they're contracting with OptumServe, and he announced that in his conference yesterday, that there'll be 80 sites throughout the state, and two sites have been allocated or identified to Ventura County. As Mr. Powers reported, that we are looking to establish one site in the west and one site in the east. And, and those sites are to focus in on individuals, in particular, will focus in on priority one individuals to be tested. That would include those that are at high risk, symptomatic, as well as healthcare workers, first responders, and other disadvantaged populations that may not have access to testing. It is anticipated that they will run roughly 100, 130 tests a day, will be their capacity, and we want to keep that volume as high as possible there. Complementary with that, we are looking to also expand what we currently have, currently have out as test locations. We have our drive-through testing, our clinics, as well as other private clinics that are offering tests to their, their clientele and patients there. To do that, we're in active negotiations with a laboratory that can do the tests in, in Southern California, that will be able to provide the testing kits for us at the volume that we expect, and that will be able to significantly increase and expand our testing capability within, in the county. With that, both the state service testing site, and as we expand ours, we're looking to develop an online registration activity for that, so individuals can register online, select a location, and be able to, to go in a more organized fashion there. With those two new developments of the Optum Serve and are working with a direct with the laboratory, it really satisfies the capacity for testing capacity beyond just having the public health in Quest provide those services, and it remedies the supply line associated with that. So we're encouraged by that. The, the state is rolling out their testing sites. They, they want to get those going next week. I don't think that will be completely statewide, but, but that is their, their starting point, and we'll see that rolling forward. We, we would like to be in the same timeframe with that as we roll out our, our capacity increase as well. With that, we also will be starting to now more formalize a comprehensive testing approach on that, to communicate to the community, to target those that are in high risk, let's say, healthcare, long-term care facilities and so forth, to develop a comprehensive plan how we can broadly test the community. So that's, that's where we are in a nutshell. And hopefully, in the next couple of meetings, we'll have active sites and, and fully operational. That's it.
Supervisors, do you have any questions for Mr. Zimmerman?
I do.
Supervisor Parks, you don't get to go away that quickly. Please go ahead. Supervisor Parks.
I know we're really interested in the serology and being able to test whether people have immunities because they've already had it, and what is the extent of the amount of people in our communities that have already had it, you know, but may have been silent carriers? Is there a way that we can gear up to testing people regardless of whether they have, you know, had it or not, so we can get that idea?
Yes, we are still pursuing the serology or the antibody tests. And so that is still an active pursuit to secure a volume and then a rollout plan associated with that. So that, that's part of the, the whole picture as well. So we're, we're not just doing the viral testing at this point. We're also exploring the antibodies. And as new tests come online and are approved through the FDA, we'll be looking at those as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
And any other supervisors? I was on a webinar just this week in regards to testing, and I was very inspired for the state to get testing within 30 minutes of people, how many testing sites they're trying to get up, two different types of tests to help our counties to really gauge where, where this virus is and how we can keep people safe. It was very impressive. Thank you very much for focusing on this. And I know they're on swaps. I heard that a lot, trying to get those in. So thank you.
Thank you, Barry, and thank you, Chair Long. Next up, we have Steve Carroll, our EMS administrator. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm Steve Carroll, Emergency Medical Services Administrator, also responsible for Public Health Emergency Preparedness. This morning, I'd like to provide you an update on our EMS Preparedness. This morning, I'd like to provide you an update on our EMS hospital, long-term care, and our personal protective equipment status. Our call volume for fire and ambulance crews remain lower than normal. However, at the end of last week, we did notice a significant spike in 911 calls and hospital emergency room visits. This increase was likely due to the increase in the warm weather, as the volumes did drop back down this weekend and then yesterday. So our ambulance writers and our hospitals and our, and our fire EMS providers are ready and prepared for any needs, but we also want to make sure that people do the right things, and we don't need them outdoing things that they're not supposed to be doing and then taxing our system. So just want to make sure that we're watching that. As Dr. Levin mentioned, we did see some additional spike in activity. So for our eight hospitals in our county, they're also seeing less than normal volume, except for they did see this spike in the ER visits last week. There's speculation that the patients do not want to go to the hospitals because of fear of being exposed to COVID, and they're waiting longer to seek medical care, which means that they're unfortunately sicker when they get to the hospital. I assure you that our hospitals and our EMS providers are doing everything that they can and everything that they need to do to protect our patients from exposure, and please do not wait until it's too late to seek assistance. We're closely watching our hospital status through our daily polls and looking to see any trends, significant trends. As of yesterday, there was 586, I have a slide here, there we go. We have 586 hospitalized patients throughout Ventura County, including 67 of the hospitalized patients who were in the ICU. And this is again, across our entire county, all eight hospitals. Thirty of those 586 hospitalized patients were COVID positive. However, seven of those numbers are actually transfers from our long-term care facilities. So we actually have 23 acute care hospitalized patients in the, in the hospital with COVID positive. I'm going to explain the seven long-term care facility patients here in a minute. The, the 23 are the acute care level patients that are actually seeking, are actually getting care within the hospital for COVID. Six of those 23 are currently in the ICU. And again, we watch these trends to see how it's impacting our county. This is where we're going to see, when we see spikes in these numbers of our acute care hospitalizations at our ICUs, that's when we're going to know that we're seeing a significant increase or impact. And we certainly like what we're seeing in our numbers being stable or even decreased. We're also watching the ventilator capacity and our availability and usage. Currently, we're at 22 ventilator patients throughout the eight hospitals, and the hospitals report 160, I'm sorry, 189 ventilators available. That number fluctuates because of the reporting. Some of the daily reports don't include the emergency ventilators in there, so that number is a little bit fluid. Actually, I think the next slide's further in a minute. Our Healthcare Coalition continues to engage our entire healthcare system partners to enhance our communication and preparedness. The Ventura County Public Health Communical Disease Team is also working with the long-term care facilities to ensure the health and safety of the residents as well as the staff, and they investigate any suspect or confirmed positive COVID-19 patients in those facilities. As we finalized our long-term care and hospital guidance documents recently, the CD team, Communical Disease Team, identified a small number of patients that were confirmed COVID positives but were not able to be safely isolated in those facilities. So with that, and with the, this hospital guidance and long-term care guidance, we moved four residents from those long-term care facilities to Ventura County Medical Center, one resident to Simi Valley Hospital, one resident to St. John's Pleasant Valley, and one resident to Community Memorial Hospital. Those residents were moved safely through the partnership of our, of our county's ambulance providers, and their dedicated EMTs and paramedics who safely moved them. Those are providers from American Medical Response, Gold Coast Ambulance, and Lifeline Medical Transport. These residents do not meet acute care hospitalization criteria but are safer in a hospitalization criteria where they can be safely isolated and not risk transmitting or our spread to our other long-term care residents. This, this process obviously relies on the hospitals and provides appropriate isolation and care for those residents, and also for the staff. We're limiting the, the risks. Happy to report that two of the residents that were transported within the last, I guess, 10 days were safely returned to, considered to be not contagious anymore, and that were safely returned to their facilities yesterday. So we're down to five of the patients or the residents from these facilities that are currently being held in our local hospitals. Again, that partnership with the, with the hospitals and our, and our local long-term care and our ambulance writers shows what Ventura County is doing to protect this most vulnerable population. And again, of course, with our, the strong leadership from our Communical Disease Team and Dr. Levin and Public Health in RIGO. So we also continue to pull our skilled nursing facilities. As of yesterday, there were 223 available beds within the 19 skilled nursing facilities, including 38 isolation beds and 16 ventilators. And lastly, for personal protective equipment, we continue to work closely with our partners at the Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services and the Emergency Operations Center team to process orders to ensure our healthcare system partners have personal protective equipment needed. The amazing and dedicated staff at EMS and our collateral staff, which we have, that we have been assigned from other parts of public health, as well as some folks from General Services, are rapidly working to fill orders and maintain our inventory. We also are assisted on a daily basis by a great team of volunteers, including our own Medical Reserve Corps, and who are all assisting us on their own time. The past seven weeks, I'm sorry, out there. In the past seven weeks, we have distributed a number of emergency preparedness equipment supplies. This is just a few of the items on the slide, but in addition to gloves, goggles, and hand sanitizer, our teams have distributed nearly 600,000 N95 masks, 474,000 procedure masks, and among a variety of other equipment to our county healthcare partners. While we want to ensure that equipment is available to those in need, our disaster supplies should not be the primary source for their personal protective equipment. The commercial supply chains have actually improved availability recently, and we are modifying our process this week to ensure that our supplies are going to the folks that are absolutely unable to fill those, those means from, by other means, or those orders by other means. This change is going to require additional information when they put their orders in, that will show what they've actually done to try to, to source that equipment from other providers before we supply the disaster supplies to them. We continue to monitor our available resources on a daily basis and our system needs. We are submitting additional orders to our state for supplies that we are in need of, including, as Barry mentioned, the testing swabs. We did get another small shipment in, and we expect to receive some more hopefully this week. And obviously, we're looking to be prepared in case there, that we do hit the surge that we all are fearing. So go for any questions. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza.
Madam Chair, Steve, Steve, I want to thank you for helping our Ventura County Home Care Givers IHSS workers. My understanding that we have about 4,000 plus workers here in Ventura County, and I just want to thank you for working with them on, on their PPE supplies, and, and I just want to thank you for that, you know, like you're helping other agencies, but thanks a lot for working with them.
Thanks, Supervisor.
Thank you. One question was brought up in a CalOES call, is preparedness for the fire season? And so just wondering, based on masks, we had so many people that donated masks for COVID-19 that they had stocked from the three years of fires. And so I, just food for thought for a month ago, or I'm not sure, just now, but to be prepared. So I wanted to ask about that.
So, yeah, that is actually a concern. It probably speaks to the fact that we probably should not be providing a 95 mask for smoke by itself. The particulate masks are actually to protect folks from inhaling particles, you know, the N95s or that. We've done that in, in past fires, more probably out of lack of any other resource available, but the best source and the best way of keeping safe in the smoke is to stay out of the smoke. So the, the idea of a, a 95 respirator, just because you see smoke in the air, is unnecessary. So it's, it's something that we're probably going to need to address because these supplies are going to be limited, you know, I mean, there's, you know, if we do, you know, come into the same situations that we had in the past.
And the reason why I bring it up is in education for our community. We have three years of, we just get the N95 and we're good. And we also have to be prepared in case next flu season or COVID-19 season, we have to use masks. So I want to make sure we're prepared, and you're always good at that. But I just wanted to make sure that our community also knows that we have to prepare for that. So.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Just to echo, so there was a lot packed in there. So just when we're talking about the road to gradual reopening, four points. Hospital capacity is solid, adequate PPE, vulnerable populations, long-term care facility, check, and then the data, COVID positives in the hospitals. A lot packed in there, so I really appreciate the update and how things are going. And there's a ton of moving parts on that long-term care, you know, Steve's team, the CD team, the hospitals, really everybody working together. So, great work. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for showing that data. I know that our legislative group and our governors are looking for data, and this is really important that we are sharing that so they understand where we, where we are in illness. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, next we'll hear from Dr. Finkhauser about our VCMC in Santa Paula Hospital. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Long, Mr. Powers, and Supervisors. I'm John Finkhauser, the hospital administrator of VCMC in Santa Paula Hospital, and my report will be fairly brief this morning. We continue to spend a tremendous amount of time and energy surrounding our preparations and, and care for COVID patients in our hospital. That includes multiple training videos that have been placed online, COVID rounding, a group of COVID experts rounding in the hospital twice daily, COVID huddles that Dr. Flossy runs at noon, three times each week, reviewing the contemporary information from our hospital, as well as from the state and the federal government. We continue to have training for hygienists, which are a new category of worker in our hospital that are really there to protect folks from exposure, enrolling out new treatment protocols as new information becomes available related to the value of things like remdesivir or chloroquine or convalescent plasma. We were one of the hospitals that took skilled nursing facility patients this last week. We received four patients, and those patients were cared for quite well by our hospitalist service, and there were no particular exposures in, in those four patients, but certainly able to care for them in a safe setting in which both they and the staff were safe from, from spread. Two of those patients have now gone back to their facility and are back in the, in the milieu of their, their care facility. We, like has been previously mentioned, are experiencing decreased volumes, and some of that is from decreased ED visits by patients who really need to be in the emergency room. We're hearing stories nationally about increased rates of perforated appendicitis, about decreasing hospital or delayed hospital care for patients who have heart attacks, and we know that in Ventura County, we're equally vulnerable to that. So we are designing a telehealth process in our emergency room, which will really have two effects. One will be to reach out to people who really don't need to come to the ED, people who have questions related to, to emergency conditions. And those patients will be given advice on the phone and treated appropriately and be able to stay at home. The other group of patients are those that just need to be reassured it's safe to come to our emergency rooms. We have a tremendous number of safety measures in place to prevent exposure in our hospital and in our emergency room. And we want people to know that if they're developing chest pressure, if they think they fractured their ankle, if they ended up having weakness in one side of their body, the right place for them, even now, is in our emergency rooms. And we want folks to be able to reach out and speak with our ER docs, be reassured that they can safely be treated in our emergency room, and be instructed on how to get there. So that will be rolling out this week as well. And then finally, we're looking at resuming electric, elective surgeries. I'll call them essential surgeries. I think these are, these are surgeries that we've delayed because they were not emergency surgeries, but surgeries that need to be done. The American College of Surgeons, the American Society of Anesthesiologists, the Association of OR Nurses, and the American Hospital Association put out a joint statement. Yesterday's advice or guidance from the governor really aligns with that statement, and that gives us very specific guidelines for how to resume those essential surgeries that were not emergency surgeries. We're using the, the prioritization tool that was recommended, and so we will be starting those up in the next two weeks. We have a, a group of folks from the operating room, both nurses and physicians, who will be working through that process. And then finally, I just again want to thank the leadership of our county, the public health, for the careful and measured approach to reopening. I'm sure everyone reads on the social media lots of nonsense, honestly, that reflects kind of cynical views, a sense of, under appreciation of the risk of this. And if anyone wants to see a, an image that, that reflects the risk, if you go to the CDC website under their USA, US daily counts, you can see what happened in the absence of measures. Mid-March, 3,000 cases. One week later, 30,000 cases. Two weeks later, 300,000 cases. Unfortunately, we will not be there because of the wisdom of our leadership. So I just want to acknowledge that.
Thank you very much. That was very powerful. Supervisors, I'm going to open the floor for any questions.
Yeah, this is Steve Bennett.
Yes, Supervisor Bennett.
Yeah, I, I just want to point out that what Dr. Finkhauser just pointed out, you know, we have a lot of people saying we have low numbers and therefore we should open everything up, and we have to realize we have low numbers because we didn't open everything up. And when you get into that geometric doubling rate, you really, you really get into a problem, you know, very quickly. So I appreciate him pointing that out, you know. Every, every country in the world that tried to go without any social restrict, you know, restricting has had trouble, except for Sweden, the thing so far that they've, they've been able to hold on in terms of monitoring that. So that is the trade-off, and I know we're all, we're all wrestling with that, but I appreciate him reminding us of that as he's moved forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Bennett. Is there any other comments? I would like to just state that our hospital system here in Ventura County is very, it's amazing. I had a friend go into surgery this week, and it went well. She did not have COVID-19. There's actually other surgeries going on in our hospitals besides this pandemic. There are babies being born in this pandemic, and everyone that leaves the hospital does not have COVID-19. I think there's some phobias out there, or just trying to be safe, and I get it. We're all staying home, don't touch anything. However, it is very important that the essential surgeries do happen, because that, if you don't prevent certain things, it gets a lot worse. And we want a healthy community. I think our board is always provided, even in our ordinances, has been about the health of all, and it would hate for us to think we're not doing that. So I just urge everybody that our hospitals are safe, we have the staffing, our volumes are low, is that correct? And so this is the time that we open up And so this is the time that we open up our hospitals for the essential. And I appreciate the governor's understanding that and all of our associations working together to make sure the protocols are there. And I look forward to saying that we are completely running and everything's doing great. It's, I really appreciate the efforts being done because I know we have the staffing and we have the space too. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Finkhauser. Next we'll hear from Dr. Cho, the CEO of our ambulatory care clinic system.
Good morning Chair Long, CEO Powers, and members of the board. Ambulatory Care is working on expanding testing. And as you heard from Barry Zimmerman, we are looking at multiple different avenues to do that with state support and also looking at private lab options. So increasing testing really requires a scrutiny of the options, including the gold standard, which is the nasopharyngeal testing. That's that long skinny Q-tip that goes all the way to the back of your nose. But there are other options where a patient might be able to test themselves by sticking a swab in the nose and that might reduce PPE and the exposure of our staff to have to do the nasopharyngeal type of test. And then we also are looking in, I know Supervisor Parks mentioned, the IgG testing. We're looking at different options for how we look at the community and see who actually might have already had it. We certainly want to have tests that are reliable enough that it's better than, slightly better than a flip of a coin, because some of the tests that are out there really don't look all that helpful. So we want to make sure that whatever we put out in our county is actually information that is useful to us in our decision-making. So some of the options require some staffing increases back at our clinics. And we are looking at urgent care options. We have our seven urgent cares. We have three of them with the drive-through, drive-up options currently. I think as we expand, we're going to think about going back to offering more testing at all of our urgent care sites. And so that's something that we're starting to think about this week. If we expand testing, who will we expand that to? And where will we provide those tests, whether it's a nasal test or even the blood test, for instance? So those are some things we're looking at. We have provided testing for the preoperative patients that Dr. Finkhauser mentioned. As we bring in patients for elective surgery, want to make sure that we know whether they're COVID positive or not. So that testing is being done at our clinic prior to the patient coming into the hospital. We're also testing pregnant mothers who are coming in to have their babies. And then if they happen to be positive, then family members of those mothers to determine who will actually safely take care of that baby. So that's some of the expanding testing that we're doing now. And then my final thing is just to remind everybody, as Dr. Finkhauser did, that the clinics are open to take care of patients, not only through telehealth options, but through walk-in live options as well for things that really need to be taken care of person to person. And just a reminder to the community, I know this has been a long haul, but those telehealth options or tele-video options are ways to stay in touch with family rather than everybody kind of coming into a house and hanging out together, which we can't do now, to use those options to stay close to family members that might be, you know, might not be able to come into your house directly. I'll take any questions.
Yes, Supervisors, any questions? In hearing then, I really appreciate it. The Deputy Attorney, District Attorney spoke yesterday at our press conference in Consumer Affairs in regards to fraud for testing. Have you heard anything of that, that you can get mail order testing?
I mean, that is a concern as, you know, many of the tests that we have are not necessarily FDA approved. Some have that emergency use authorization. But again, because there's such a push to try to get more information about, you know, who has had COVID, there definitely are lots of fraudulent, you know, options. So we, you know, we here at county, we're looking very closely at the options, looking at the data that they have, how many people they sampled, how that has compared to other data, so that we're sure we're not buying into something that's fraudulent. But yeah, I would warn consumers out there to be careful not to just buy something that they got an ad for because there's really no way to prove that that is very useful. The testing for IgG, the problem is that we don't know if it cross reacts with other coronaviruses. So some tests are better about that than others. But there are many tests that might be positive because you've had a previous exposure to something that looks like coronavirus but is not COVID nineteen. And the other thing is that we don't know if the positive result means that you have immunity and how long that immunity will last. So there's all these questions. So I'd be really cautious before we tell the community to go buy something that they might happen to see on a website, for instance.
Great, so then if I was wanting to get tested, where would I go?
I would rely on the clinic system and the healthcare system, the doctors and all of the staff at the clinics. And, you know, again, you know, we would do a thorough kind of evaluation of whatever test we're going to use before we put it out. So rather than just going directly to a website or something, I would go to your clinic and talk with your doctor.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I know on our vcemergency.com, under healthcare, there is a PDF that tells you where all the testing is. And I wanted to make sure that we reassure our community that to really make sure you know if you have COVID nineteen or not is to go talk to our physicians here, not to buy online and get a test or drive down to some other spot that someone says, I got a test for you. Please be consistent in using our system to make sure that we're adequately getting the information we need, that data. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Could I ask a question Supervisor?
Supervisor Parks?
Yes, as you look at expanding these IgG testing, is there certain equipment that you are lacking, that you need more of, that we can assist with? Test tubes or is it a blood test?
Reliable ones will be a blood test that will require venipuncture. So the ones that are with the finger pokes are probably not as reliable. So I think what we need to do, and so it's a little hard to imagine that that might be feasible in a drive-through, although we are considering that. So I think at the moment, it's not so much of a equipment need Supervisor Parks, it's more of identifying the right test and then having the process in place. Obviously, if we identify a need, we'll come back and share that with you. But I don't think that's the main issue at the moment.
Thank you.
If we, also if we are able, and I know we've gotten, I think it was something like twenty-six individuals who are plasma donors, do we have the capability, if we want to then move forward, to actually do that, kind of administer the plasma from, you know, one individual to another?
I believe we do. That might be more of a Dr. Finkhauser question. But yes, I think we would be able to do that for the patients that are hospitalized. Correct.
Thank you.
And there's a donor list of those registered for the plasma?
Yes, there is.
And they can get that at vcemergency.com, right?
Correct. Yes, so if you're willing to volunteer to give your plasma, that would be the place to go to sign up for that.
So.
Supervisor Bennett, is that you?
Yes. So how robust do we think this program would be in the next two or three weeks, the plasma transfer program?
I'm not probably the best person to speak to that. I know that there's a registry that we're keeping through public health and through our blood bank partners. I'm not, you know, with, I'm not sure if anyone else.
Dr. Finkhauser, could you come down and answer Supervisor Bennett's and Parks' question, please? Thank you so much.
Sure, thanks.
You have such great knowledge in our boardroom.
So with the plasma donation program where we're at right now is in the, we're close to having a finalized contract with the blood bank that will then reach out to those individuals who have signed up as potential donors, as well as individuals who've been treated in our system who are willing to donate. Then the blood bank basically identifies or confirms their immunoglobulin and does the plasma feresis, which allows us to use that. So we're close, but not there yet. And working with other hospitals in the county, there's one other hospital in the county that's used the convalescent plasma for treatment and seeing if there, prior to getting that in place, if there's the possibility that we can tap into that donor supply from that hospital.
And Dr. Finkhauser, do you, could you speculate? Do you think in two or three weeks, this will be a robust? I mean, I know it's limited in terms of how far it can go, but will we be actively sort of in?
Yeah, we'll certainly be evolving. I'm sorry. It will certainly be evolving over the next two to three weeks. I think it will be something that we could potentially put into place even sooner than that. And then, you know, something that I think will be a registry of potential donors that is added to. As you can imagine, not every donor is acceptable for a critically ill patient. These are still only recommended to be used in critically ill patients in the ICU. So, you know, we're hoping as that number of patients decreases that we see the need decrease. But in the meantime, we're creating a registry of potential plasma donors.
Thank you.
And another follow-up question.
Supervisor Parks?
We also have to be looking at the potential for a resurgence. So it's good if we can have a supply of this. The question that I have is, are we more interested in blood types also? So there may be some more rare blood types. Are we looking for, you know, does that have any bearing on whose plasma that we're looking for?
Yeah, it does. You know, in the blood donation, O negative is the universal donor. It's AB is the blood type that's the universal donor in plasma. So for those who are recovered, who have AB blood type, that would be particularly valuable if we could get those individuals.
Okay, I may be positive, but I don't think I've had COVID yet. Otherwise, I definitely would donate.
And we'll hope to keep it that way.
Thank you.
Good information, and it's something that I think our board would like to hear of in future weeks as things move on forward. I really appreciate.
I know there are a lot of people out there that love to be able to donate, you know, that have gone through this. So it's wonderful that we have a registry and we're able to do that. And once we become more robust, as Supervisor Bennett was talking about, that would be just so wonderful to see that that is actually helping to cure people.
Great, thank you very much. Was there any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Finkhauser. Thank you, Dr. Cho. Next up, we'd like to hear from our Behavior Health Director, Dr. Savet Johnson. We know that our community is facing tremendous stress and so mental health issues are never more important than right now. And I know it's a better huber in particular to ask to hear from our Behavior Health Director. So thank you, Savet.
Good morning Chair Long, Supervisors via Zoom, and CEO Powers. For the record, Savet Johnson, Behavior Health Director. So I want to give a quick overview of what we've done so far as we are now in week seven and then give some highlights about key areas that we are looking at as we move forward and the need for services that we anticipate in our county. So very quickly, all of our clinics have remained open. We have reduced staffing in order to ensure that we have social distancing in the workplace. However, some of our services absolutely have to be done in person, such as injections, crisis assessments for individuals who may be having challenges in the moment, et cetera. So out of over six hundred staff, we have about four hundred that are telecommuting and all others on-site, whether they're in-site at a clinic, at a shelter site, supporting our whole person care team, or working in administration to do all the things that keeps everyone working with contracts and our fiscal teams. Our crisis team calls had remained stable from about three hundred to three hundred fifty-eight per week with the average of three twenty-five per week. Until last week, we saw about a seventeen percent spike in calls, leading us right at three hundred and eighty-five calls last week. So we had been waiting and tracking and really looking at the numbers. They initially decreased, then they stabilized, and now we're slightly seeing some uptick. So we'll continue to track that. We're also now in our electronic health record, able to track COVID-related calls so we can really see what the tenor is of individuals who are calling our line. In addition to the immediate health threats caused by COVID nineteen, we are very aware of the long-term impact ramifications on individuals who've been on stay-at-home orders and who've suffered job loss, are looking at housing insecurities and food insecurities because of economic crisis caused by this pandemic. So we're not fully aware of the wide range of needs that will arise, but we know that there are some significant areas that we have to address. The first being school mental health. Progress has been made and we've been in constant communication with our VCOE, Ventura County Office of Education Partners, to ensure that, one, our staff, we have about sixty staff that are school-based already. And so making sure that our staff are able to leverage the technology that was provided to students to do distance learning in order to either do Zoom calls or FaceTime calls or just straight telephone calls if there are no other devices in the home available. In addition to that, we're looking at, we're so excited, just, I think it was last Friday or last Thursday, we were notified by the Mental Health Oversight and Accountability Commission that of the four large counties, of four large counties in California, we were awarded a six million dollar grant to have eight wellness clinics on high school campuses in our county. So we are thrilled, absolutely thrilled, because we know that the need is there and this will really help us as schools come back to session and we're really able to have more of a presence on the school sites and really able to tap in in helping our young individuals who will be returning to a new normal adjust and really be mentally well. Suicide prevention. Research indicates suicide rates will increase following this COVID nineteen crisis. We saw that in Sonoma County after they experienced their fires. And so we anticipate that that will be unfortunately accurate and something that we have to be extremely proactive about, not just for our consumers and those who are enrolled clients, but as a campaign for our whole county to really make sure that we are checking in, that we're working with employers and really gauging how folks are dealing with our new normal. So as you know, we already, yearly we do a suicide prevention campaign. We have a work group that meets monthly. But we want to make sure that we have a widespread campaign, really promoting healthy mental health, reducing stigma and having some very normalizing activities that individuals can engage in if things just aren't feeling a hundred percent right. In terms of workplace mental health, we did something really interesting in behavior health. Then we started a self-care challenge. And it was really just how do you maintain your mental health in this time of being, you know, far away and not being connected to your team, to your families, to your friends? And so we're going to be challenging other agencies in our county to jump on and let's challenge each other to really look out for our own mental health and self-care. Outreach, 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 outreach. I cannot say this enough. We are just extremely fortunate in this county. One, we have a brand-new PIO, Ashley Bautista, who is absolutely amazing. I think week one, she reached out and said, who do you have? We want to do some PSAs, we need them in English and Spanish, who do you have? And I was like, okay, who do I have? And immediately it was the LaGrande Vienna Star team. So Cynthia Salas, who is our Health Equity and Services Manager, and Angelis, one of our staff, started working with Ashley very quickly, recording videos in English and Spanish, even inviting respected and well-known folks from our community to come and talk about wellness and self-care. I know people are sick of seeing me because I did some and they're out there. But we have been just thoroughly engaged, engaging past clients, current clients, school districts, really saying, what can we do to make sure we're partnering? It's very exciting to know that our Health Equity Manager reached out to the school districts. And now when they've identified over a hundred families that they see as at high risk and they're calling them one by one, one of their referrals is, you know, this is the number to LaGrande Vienna Star, let me give it to you. You can call them and get linked up with services. So that's a big thing. Another thing is that they've been working with the Farmworker Resource Program and flyers, I think thirty thousand flyers went out, Rosa? It has that number listed so individuals can link right in and we can track that and see where these referrals are coming from and just making sure that they get the services that they need, when they need them. So that's extremely important. Criminal justice involvement. We're likely to see an increase in the number of mental health consumers that become involved in the criminal justice system. Last week, we had a Behavior Health Manager, Dr. Mike Rodriguez, who worked with his staff and jail staff to assess and evaluate thirteen clients over about three days in order to get ten placed as a result of the Nobel legislation. So that was really, really huge. And again, it's partnering and collaboration. It's not something we can do all on our own, but leveraging the resources and the ingenuity of all the others around us that make us able to really serve our community. Lastly, I referenced this, but the increasing of racial and ethnic disparities is a real threat because of the challenges of this pandemic on our communities, especially those that are really dealing with the possible loss of housing and work. And so our LaGrande Vienna Star team is continuing to work to smooth. And so our La Grande Villanestar team is continuing to work to smooth transitions to services for individuals, continuing to building trust in the community in order to just ensure that as much as we can, we lessen the impact of COVID-19 and ensure that our at risk communities are not spiraling down and lost in the cracks. That is the end of my update. I'm open for any questions.
I will open the floor to the supervisors. Do you have any questions? Supervisor Huber.
Yes, hi, I don't have a question. I just wanted, I just wanted to thank Dr. Johnson for your report and thank you for being so responsive to my questions that I had submitted earlier. It's important to track COVID-19 related calls to our local suicide hotline. Thank you for initiating that tracking. It's very much appreciated.
Absolutely.
Yes, and I really appreciate the attendance at the press conferences. It's been very helpful. We have many that are at home that are, don't have any contact with anyone, need to get some help. And your calming voice and presence has been noted in many of the community. That is, talk to me, and I wanted to pass that on to you. But thank you very much for all the service that is going on for our community, because it's not just the physical health, but the mental health of our community that makes it so special. So thank you. Got all choked up.
Thank you for the opportunity, sir.
Thank you so much, Dr. Johnson. Next up, we'll hear from our RMA Director, Kim Perlehart, and all the important enforcement work that RMA is doing.
Thank you, Chair Long, CEO Powers, and members of the board. My name is Kim Perlehart. I'm the Resource Management Agency here at the county. I want to start out with a, with a good story. I want to say that I am the mother of three young boys, and I used this Teladoc service last night at about 8:00. I saw a rash on one of my sons. You think you've seen it all, but that was a new one. I called, I registered, and with, in 15 minutes, I was speaking to a doctor who assured me exactly what the problem was. So I just want to say, as a, as a parent, that was very comforting last night. So on to enforcement of the orders. The Resource Management Agency does that in two different ways. We have a code compliance division that is led by Doug Leeper, and him and his team are doing just an amazing job. They've answered 2,900 phone calls to date. That's about 110 a day that they're averaging. They're getting write backs to, back to folks. I think the, the good thing about that number is people are wanting to do the right thing, right? They're either calling and telling us that, that a business may or may not be operating, but the businesses community is also calling us and, and really reaching out, wanting to understand if they're an essential business and how they can operate within the confines of the order. So we are educating, we're gaining in compliance. And when we have to, we are doing enforcement, but it, we're really gaining compliance in such a great way. And along with our partners at the city, a lot of these calls get forwarded to the cities. And I know the cities are taking a huge amount of time and effort going out and visiting their essential businesses for social distancing protocols as well. So they're taking that very seriously. We've only issued nine COVID closure orders to date in five different cities and one today in an unincorporated Ventura County. And as far as restaurant inspections, Charles Ginkel and his job are doing a really excellent job on that as well. We have over 2,200 restaurants in the county of Ventura and 730 markets. That's a lot for them to go out to. And since March 15th, they have actually visited over 2,300 of those. So their numbers, going out, educating, providing guidance to the community has been really upstanding work that they've been doing. Once again, if, if you have questions on your business or you believe a business is operating inappropriately, we want you to contact us. It's covidcompliance@ventura.org. Or we want you to give us a call. It's 805-202-1805. And that number is answered 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. So that's all I have, unless there's questions.
Supervisors, I opening it up for questions? I would like to personally say thank you. We've sent over quite a few people to the code compliance as we had the new revised ordinance and understanding customers, businesses wanting to know, are they in this or not? What do they have to do? And we are hearing just all the businesses wanting to work with our code compliance to make sure that they are safe for the community and that they're practicing the steps that they need to, to be able to still be in business and, and the safety of the community. So I just think that's a great partnership. Mr. Powers.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Long, and thank you, Kim. I think we should change this report to the compliance and education title, because as you say, the spirit of this, you know, vast, vast majority of these businesses saying, we want to comply and we think we can do it by doing it this way. And not just with the letter, but with the spirit of the order to protect public health. So it's beautiful. And as you say, working with our city partners, we talk with them every day. We have a coordinating meeting with our city managers, and it's, it's a really good cohesive group. Thank you, Kim. Okay, next up, we'll get a report from Sheriff Ayew.
Well, good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers, county staff. For the record, I'm Bill Ayew, Sheriff of Ventura County. I've reported previously on our jail population. That continues to decline somewhat precipitously. I'm happy to report our inmate population is still relatively healthy, at least in terms of the COVID-19 virus. We have no known inmates with the virus in our jail system. Our population is just below 900 at 899 inmates. 38 of those are awaiting transfer to state prison. State prison has, has stopped the transfer of inmates from county jails as a measure to reduce their populations and limit the likelihood of virus being brought into the state prisons and creating a, some more infection amongst the inmate population there. So a good chunk of our population is people that would normally have been sent off to state prison already. Interestingly, our, we, I've talked previously about the $0 bail orders that are in effect across the state. And we've had 25 individuals recidivate since those, since they've been released from custody on $0 bail. Two of those inmates have recidivated twice, and one has recidivated four times. And that's just in a two week period. So those are some of the individuals that have been released into custody. I'm happy to say that they're minor offenses that they've recidivated on, but they are nuisance issues in our community. They take up our deputies' time, and their, their continuous cycle in and out of our jail system does increase the likelihood of, of some type of infection being brought in. This past weekend, or really the last part of last week, we saw some unusually warm weather and some media saturation related to our open beaches in Ventura County. Our beaches had largely remained open throughout this, this pandemic crisis. But the, the large LA based media's coverage of our beaches being open, plus unseasonably warm weather, contributed to some crowds coming to our beaches, which had otherwise been fairly well attended by our, our local residents and some visitors to our county. We hadn't seen a lot of crowding, very minor issues. We did start to see some crowding into Thursday and Friday, and we stepped up our presence at the beaches and instituted a soft closure, which required visitors and residents to engage in essential activities at the beaches, activities such as walking, running, swimming, surfing, fishing, and so forth. This was an educational process. As people came to the beach, we had deputies and rangers from the county talking about what we were doing and why. And, and I'm happy to say that our visitors and our residents largely were compliant and understanding of what we were doing. They were pleased that we didn't institute a full closure order and that they were still able to enjoy our beaches and recreate. That's something also, I, we, we worked hand in hand with our local municipal police chiefs that have coastal access. We are all on the same, the same page in terms of, of our approach to enforcement of the health orders on our beaches. So we did have continuity throughout our coastlines. Our Emergency Operations Center continues to be active. We have reduced staffing and operational hours somewhat to accommodate our needs as, in terms of the burdens on our EOC. We're working actively to coordinate state testing sites as secure lab service for increased testing capacity. And our EOC continues to look for and acquire personal protective equipment for a variety of entities. We have a good stock on hand, and we have a new method for requesting orders at vcem.org. That's vcem.org. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Can I get a clarification on the vcem.org? It's a new website for this, or?
It is. It's a link to a website that has a portal for ordering personal protective equipment for entities.
Thank you.
Mr. Steve.
Steve, Supervisor Bennett.
Yeah, I wanted to both appreciate the sheriff and the deputies. Very challenging work this weekend and did a great job. I also want to compliment Mike Powers and staff getting out accurate information. I think we, Ventura County got unfairly linked in with Orange County. And I thought that the very proactive response by the CEO's office, getting out accurate information about how much better our beaches were, was very valuable. So hats off to everybody for the great effort this weekend, from the top down to the Sheriff's deputy out patrol and all the way up to the sheriff and Mr. Powers. Thank you.
I really, Supervisor Parks, yes.
Tremendous thanks to the sheriff and all the police chiefs, the state parks and Caltrans, and everyone coming together to ensure that we have consistent soft closing of all the beaches. And I think that was really helpful and quite successful, as, as mentioned. I have received so many compliments from individuals who live out near the beaches, thanking us for being able to control it so we didn't have crowds, as well as, you know, certainly some people who don't realize that we were actually successful in this and just read, you know, what the media had incorrectly stated and are kind of saying, how, how dare you? But actually, I was just so appreciative that we were able to maintain the, the social distancing, only allowing people to go to the beach if they aren't sunmating. You know, they had to continue moving along. They couldn't have umbrellas and coolers and all those beach chair type of things. So it worked. It was a really, you know, heavy push, I know, from all these different agencies. And I just really appreciate to be able to do that. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, I also like to commend, you know, our sheriff, and the partnership that we have with the, with all the chiefs in, in, here in Ventura County, especially here in, in Ochs Ventura, Ochs Ventura and Wayneemi. And, and all the hard work, the 24/7, you know, work that they, they do. So thank, Sheriff, thank you tremendously. And, and it was mentioned, our CEO's office and all the volunteers that are out there helping out. Thank you for, for making Ventura look great, Ventura County look great. Thank you.
Yes, and it was, it was very hard to handle from a community standpoint of going from cold and rain to beautiful Southern California weather. And how could you not get out of your four walls and actually go outside and exercise? And I appreciate everyone's understanding on the fact that we did need to only exercise. You couldn't sit and get your lunchbox and your chair and just enjoy the beautiful weather. And I appreciate it. On our, our, really quick, we had a press conference on Friday. We had our Health Director, Riggo Vargas, Mike Powers, our CEO, Sheriff Bill Ayew, our Ventura County, Dave Sasek, our for Parks. We had Scott, Chief Scott Whitney from the City of Oxnard. We had Chief Andrew Salinas from City of Port Wayneemi, Chief Darren Schindler from City of Ventura, the Deputy Chief Dustin Garden from Fire Department. We had Mark Sandoval, because the harbors got, the boat launch was opened. We also had Dina Bellin from the Califor, California Department of Parks and Regulations. We had Mayor Garasetti putting out news things. I had calls, we had calls with Senator Hannah Beth Jackson and other legislators. We had Governor Newsom actually stating people to exercise only. I mean, the mass amount of people focused on the safety of our community was amazing. And I, I do feel a little bit sensitive that they didn't call, the media didn't call us for our photos, because we did share the, the photos of our beaches and how controlled they were. And I really do appreciate everyone's work that went into this, because it was a big effort. And I, I just appreciate it. And next time media wants to use photos, we have a lot of them. So I hope they, they use our photos next time. So with that, I'll pass it on to Mr. Powers.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, before.
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza.
You, you mentioned something really important, and I, I just want to thank Mark Sandoval over at the, our harbor director. He's doing really a great, great job and it keeps us up to, to speed and what's up to date and what's happening there at the harbor. And, and to maintain control there at the harbor with the beaches and with the hot weather and so forth, I just want to commend him for the good work that he's doing and working with the CEO's office and also with the, with the public safety officials. So I want to thank Mark for that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, board members. Appreciate those comments. And Sheriff Ayew, great work. Thank you so much. Next, we'll tune to our, turn to our homeless task force and Tara Caruth.
Good morning, Chair Long, Board Members, CEO Powers, and Tara Caruth with the County Executive Office and Ventura County Continuum of Care. Brief update from our homeless task force. We do continue to accept referrals for the non congregate shelter motel placements for homeless people over age 65 or those with underlying health conditions that qualify them, put them at high risk. We now have nearly 300 people placed. This is a fluctuating number, and that's because we're serving people that have complicated needs. And some people come into the program, choose to leave. And then we have also had some, some challenging behavior issues, some related to behavioral health and substance use challenges. And really want to appreciate our, our site managers from the Human Services Agency, our contracted security team that's there 24/7, and our partnership with Behavioral Health and Turning Point Foundation, providing onsite services. And also our whole person care and medical team who are providing, you know, addiction medicine services, medication assisted treatment. This is a very vulnerable population, and some of them have very high needs. And so it's really required, you know, a real partnership and all hands on deck to provide services. The slide you see up here is from yesterday, the, the number of people that are replaced, that are placed in motels from these cities. And our city partners have been asking about this, how many people are placed. And then we will have some additional information, but this is changing on a day to day basis. So I wanted to share that with you. We are continuing to work on data entry and data collection in our homeless management information system that will be used for state reporting and FEMA reimbursement. Oh, sorry. And so then this is just a brief summary of some of the services that are being provided. We continue to work with our nonprofit partners who have also been able to refer. We've accepted hospital discharges and, and referrals from our city partners through their homeless liaison officers. Another thing I wanted to share, obviously, our nonprofit service providers and our county service providers, our remain essential services for the homeless community. We're continuing to do outreach with backpack medicine. An update on positive cases. As of my last report, we had one positive case among the homeless community that was under quarantine. That person, as of yesterday, has tested negative, had their first negative test. So they are recovering and will soon transition. So we're very pleased that these efforts, we believe, have really controlled the spread among this population. And then lastly, I wanted to share with you that our, our partners at the United Way of Ventura County have placed these 18 veteran households that don't meet this high risk criteria. They have now raised funding to extend those placements through the month of May. So they have paid for those placements through fundraising efforts through April and now have secured those placements through May. May. They're providing the same nutritional needs and placements. And then they are working with people, many of those veterans are holding vouchers, have access to housing resources, and they are trying to identify rental units for them. And that concludes my update for today. Happy to answer any questions.
Could you hit the total we have in the motels again?
Yes. So as of yesterday evening, it was 297 people. So we're approaching 300. It has fluctuated a little bit as we continue to work with folks about whether they want this placement or not.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open this up to the supervisors. Supervisors, any questions for Tara? I would just like to say thank you. There's so much Supervisor Parks.
Just an incredible job, you know. We stand out in the state of California because of the work that we have done with this specific population, getting them off the street, making sure that it doesn't spread in the homeless population that it does in some of the major cities. So just a lot of hard work went into it, a lot of hours, no doubt. And I just really want to express our appreciation for your job. Well done. And I know it continues, you know. But thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Yes, this program is a 24-hour-a-day, seven-days-a-week program. And the staff is putting so many hours in to just make sure this is successful. Because like Supervisor Parks said, this has been really a help for our community not to spread the COVID-19. It's been really a great program. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Yes, great work, Tara and team. Thank you. And thank you for mentioning that, Chair Long, that it is 24/7. So every day that we're having here on the weekends nights, this program is ongoing. And there's a lot of logistics involved in terms of healthcare and support, but also food, making sure there's food available. And I really appreciate Patrick Maynard and OES coordinating all of those logistics. And Chris Russell from Human Services, too, just an amazing group. And James Boyd, now I won't mention them all, but it's just Eva running the Oxnard Shelter. It's an extraordinary group of dedicated people. So thank you. Next up, we'll hear about the work with our senior population. Speaking of extraordinary people, Victoria Jump.
Good morning, members of the board, Chair Long, Mr. Powers. For the record, Victoria Jump, Area Agency on Aging. And I'll just provide a brief update where we are with our feeding program. So to date, we've served over 11,000 individuals and provided over 215,000 meals. On Friday, the governor during his press conference announced that there would be a new program for older adults, which through FEMA, which is providing three meals a day through restaurants. And so we had lots of meetings over the weekend trying to figure out what this looks like and to try to take, you know, advantage of this opportunity because right now it's time limited. And so the sooner we can launch it and get restaurants working on it and people eating, the more money we can pull down and help our restaurants. And so it did launch in this county on a small scale on Monday. So the first restaurant was providing meals on Monday. And so we beat the rest of the state, not that we're competitive or anything.
We are just a little.
Just a tiny bit. So what they're looking for for restaurants is really for restaurants that are struggling, more of the smaller mom and pop type of restaurants. The intent never was for like huge chain restaurants that are doing well. So for us, the qualifiers are that there are going to be a minimum number of orders that each restaurant has to commit to, that they're committing to using locally grown produce so that we keep our farm workers working and use what's in the field, but also that they're able to provide variety. Because what we don't want is somebody eating the same dinner every single day. And we're allowing a one, you know, daily delivery or every other day delivery as well. For participants, right now, the guidance is, and this may change because there's a lot of holes in this. So they're going to most likely provide us with more guidance. So right now, it's the person must be 65 or older or otherwise at high risk defined by the CDC, which is a lot of people fall into that potentially high risk category. It would also include those that have tested positive for COVID of any age or COVID exposed. And so when I hear like all these people being tested and recovering, well, that's also our universe, which those individuals will be eligible for food. The person must live alone or with somebody else that's also eligible in a household. So if you have one person that's COVID positive, everybody in that household, we now can feed under this program. There are qualifications related to the person can't be participating in other federal nutrition assistance programs right now, which includes CalFresh and the Senior Nutrition Program. So we essentially have to assess them, choose a lane where they're getting their their meals, and that's the lane that they have to stay in. And then finally, the person has to affirm that they either cannot prepare their meals or they have difficulty obtaining meals. So we're waiting for more guidance. The issue that we are seeing right now is you have, you know, a lot of people that are low income, that are receiving CalFresh benefits, and it's not, you know, it's not a lot. They still have the inability to go to a grocery store. So they're in their home, but they can't have this program. Thankfully, we have other programs that we can feed them, but they're not allowed to participate, you know, in this program. And we found since we started enrolling people in it yesterday, the people are very honest. They're not trying to hide it, to try to, you know, fake qualify for something. So they're saying, I want this. And then when the question comes up, well, do you receive CalFresh? Yes. Well, you're sorry, you can't, you know, qualify for this program. So what it's also done for our normal Senior Nutrition Program partners is some of the cities, all they can do right now is like one meal a day. To make things equitable, so you don't have one program where you get three meals a day, and this program where you get, you know, one versus three, we now have to make it equal. And so we're working with our city partners as to, okay, what can you do? Can you, you know, serve more people? And we've heard from one of the cities that, okay, for in order for us to serve more, we need you to take back as an agency some of the people that you sent us to provide more service to. So it's a little complicated. We're working through it, not impossible. We are rolling it out, but we just have to be mindful of those people that can't qualify for another reason and make sure that what we're doing is equitable for all.
And can I ask how the food pantries work with that as well? Because we have Food Share out there. We have that food service as well.
If the person is participating in a food pantry, they could participate in the restaurant meal program. They just can't, you know, food stamps, CalFresh.
So I wanted to make sure people knew that that was another alternative or in addition to when you don't have enough food. And then also, if we have restaurants that are contacting us, where do you want us to send them?
Send them to us. Right now, we are creating a fair process so that we can't, so everybody has a chance to do it. But we are going to limit the number of restaurants that can participate.
So then can you let the community know right now that are watching where they would need to go?
So most likely where the plan is where the application will be housed is on the VC emergency site. Right now, the application where people don't have to call in, they can actually go online and fill out an application to be part of the program, that is on our website. So we will actually provide the link to the VC emergency site as well. And that's in English and Spanish.
And that's the v c triple A dot org?
Yes. And then it's backslash food.
Backslash food. Okay, thank you. Because I know that a lot of people since that Friday announcement with the governor has been trying to work with them. Some restaurants already work with World Central Kitchen, but they also, they're just wanting to give back to the community and they have those connections to provide for them. So they'd like to help. So thank you.
This is Steve.
Supervisor.
I just wanted, I wanted to make one suggestion, and that is I very much appreciate your efforts to say, hey, the produce has to be locally produced. I only, I only am concerned that that may limit, you know, some things. And so if there was something that said, if it is available locally, we must buy it, it must be locally produced. But if you want to, if you want to put something in the meal that is not locally, you know, a produce that's not locally produced, then I think we ought to have that flexibility. I'll leave that to you guys to figure that out from there. But I wanted to get that.
Right. It's preferred, but not mandated. Okay. I think that's what Supervisor Bennett was talking about. Any other supervisors, any questions?
I think it can be mandated if it's locally produced. That's probably a little bit different wording on that. Yeah, thank you.
There you go. Good. Good discussions. Mr. Powers.
Just thank you to Victoria and Patrick Maynard for jumping on this over the weekend and getting it, getting it rolling. It came out fast. And really do thank you Supervisor for highlighting the opportunity for our local restaurants to sign up for this. We need them, and they're doing a great job of feeding our community. So thank you, Victoria. Next up, we'll hear from Melissa Livingston on our Task Force for Disability Access and Functional Needs.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. For the record, Melissa Livingston, acting deputy, acting director of the Human Service Agency. Today, I'm going to bring some different things than I've been talking about in the past to kind of shake it up a little bit. We have a town hall that has been set up for this afternoon. And that town hall is specifically to address the needs of our home health and hospice providers. And leading that discussion will be Dr. Dial and he, from Livingston Memorial. And he will be putting a frame around the clinical practice that our home health and hospice providers are doing as it relates to interacting with their patients. We'll also have public health there to be on the line to talk about infection control. We'll have our EMS experts there around our PPE. And we will have a social worker who will be addressing staff, patient, and family fears. And then Victoria and myself will be there to address resources that are available from a business loan perspective, as well as different resources that are available to patients and to the community. So we're looking forward to that webinar and hopefully the benefit that it provides to those participants. As was mentioned earlier, our public authority has received PPE, personal protective equipment that actually has come from the governor's, the governor has purchased PPE for all public authorities. And that was received this week. And we're beginning the process of coordination of the distribution of that PPE. That is to be coordinated with our in-home support providers. Those providers are to contact us after they've contacted their patients to determine first before they go into their homes if they are COVID positive or if, in fact, they may be symptomatic. And so that is when those IHSS providers will leverage that PPE because we want to be judicious with the use of that. We also are setting up a backup registry for our in-home support services. Our consumers may have providers who are COVID positive or are symptomatic or may be needing to quarantine. And so we want to ensure that our consumers receive all of the care that they need during this time. So we're setting up a backup registry to allow for if a provider can't be available, that we will have somebody to back them up and ensure care and support for those individuals. We also have been approached by World Central Kitchen and Amazon. They are wanting to provide free meals to our child welfare families and children, recognizing that that's a very vulnerable population. And so we're working through the logistics of that and how we can actually deliver those meals across the county to all of that vulnerable population. We anticipate we'll probably be needing to call upon our disaster service workers to assist us with that. The meal preparation and refrigeration, we think we'll have that taken care of. And it's just really picking them up and delivering those meals. So we're looking forward to that opportunity to feed that population. And then lastly, last week, we received notice from the U.S. Department of Agriculture. They are, had intended to release a RFP for getting fresh produce out into our communities. And so last week, we provided visibility of this to our ag advisory group that has just formed, became, formed through Ed Williams leadership, as well as our county leadership and a number of our local growers and nonprofit organizations. So that information's gone to them. We've sat on webinars, listening, and we have staff listening as of this morning. They released the RFP. It's due on May 1. And what that will do is it will actually provide the ability to leverage funds from the USDA to purchase and to distribute and to deliver food. And the great part about that is there is a recognition that because we have, our food chain supply coming from our local growers has been impacted because of restaurants being closed and schools being closed. And so we want to get that local produce into the hands of our community. And so it's an opportunity for this USDA money to actually purchase that food. So it's a win-win for everybody there. But it also addresses that problem with the food chain supply, but it also addresses the food insecurity that we're experiencing right now. So we hope that the advisory group, the ag advisory group, is able to put their heads around this and devise a method by which we can get that local produce out. And it's really intended that that local produce goes to pantries, it goes to food banks, it goes to schools, it goes to nonprofits, and it also benefits our triple A organizations. So that is the end of my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Supervisors, do you have any questions? I just, we talked about this quite a few weeks ago in regards to the concern of our ag and getting it to the end user because we didn't have the middle person to be working with that. So I'm very excited about this program, and I'm hoping that everyone can work together to really solve it. Because I know we've also talked about growers not growing as much because those orders haven't been processed. And when you do that, that means we, the farm workers, aren't working. It's a domino effect. And if we can keep this moving forward, I think it's really beneficial for so many. And just thank you very much for all the hard work that we're going to be doing to get this successful. Thank you. Mr. Powers.
Thank you. Mel, I did have one question. Forgive me if you mentioned it. Your call center, the number of calls you're making?
Oh, yes.
Oh, good point.
That was old news, so I was trying to give new news today. But no, but it's good news. Our call center has over 19,000 calls that it's made to date. And about 10% of those are netting either food or basic needs. And we continue to make those calls with our disaster service workers, as well as our in-home support service, our adult protective service, and our child, children and family services. Social workers are also making additional wellbeing calls in addition to that callback.
About how many a day, just ballpark?
It's a few hundred a day.
Few hundred a day. Yeah, so critical to reach out to folks. Thank you for doing that every day. Yeah.
And we have 211 as well.
211, that's right.
To make sure that, right, in multiple different languages, to make sure that people can either call or text. And we just have so many good services out there working together.
And as you brought up 211, 211 is getting ready to release a community needs assessment survey. And basically, that survey is going out to individuals that have contacted them over the last number of weeks. And from that, they'll be determining what those needs are and then making referrals to those appropriate organizations.
Great.
Great. Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear an update on our farm workers' task force from Rosa Gonzalez, the community liaison from the CEO's office, and clerk of the board.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Chair Long, Board of Supervisors, CEO Powers. Rosa Gonzalez, community liaison with the County Executive Office. And yeah, so our Farm Worker Resource Program, Israel Vasquez, along with Dr. Khan from VCM, C's Backpack Medicine, they're working together on collaborating on some videos, providing information to share regarding our farm visits. information to share regarding our farm visits and covering some of the frequently asked questions from farm workers. That way, we could split these videos up into little sections and then share those online and also with our farm worker group via WhatsApp. That way, the information goes out to all of our farm workers out there. As we continue to share the prevention and recognizing symptoms, the next steps and the goal to these videos now are, is information on what to do if you think you might have COVID, or if you test positive, or if you know someone that has. How to quarantine and isolate in various living conditions such as roommates and multifamily households. Our Farm Worker Resource Program, along with our ag commissioner, Ed Williams, and our CEO office, continue to participate in discussions with growers and farm workers, farm worker advocates on the advisory, which is revised on an as-needed basis and as the group sees is needed. We're also excited to share that Food Share is accepting the county's voluntary essential worker card as a form of ID proving residency in their food pantry pop-up distributions. The ag commissioner's office, to date, has distributed over 21,000 of these cards and continues to process requests as they come in. And this is going to be tremendously helpful for a lot of our farm workers that don't have the proof of residency, such as a bill or a formal identification card, such as a California ID. So this card is really going to be helpful to make sure our farm workers have access to food. Our Farm Worker Resource Program collaborated with UCLA and UC Davis to create culturally appropriate infographic flyers and messaging regarding COVID for our farm workers that can be used at the state level and with other counties. This has already proven to be successful. We have already rolled it on, shared it, and we're also going to share this with the 35,000 flyers that are going out to our farm workers on Friday. But also UC Berkeley has also asked to use this for their agriculture program, and so have some of the other counties that have a large ag community have also requested to use this. So this is really helpful with our Farm Worker Program, sharing some of their information and knowledge with UCLA and UC Davis to base this information that goes out to the public. Lastly, we would like to share, if you could, a really great story. Our Farm Worker Program was contacted by a group of residents from Los Angeles in the Pasadena area that reached out and wanted to specifically help our farm workers. And after discussing the needs of our farm workers and their families, this group drove down from Los Angeles and dropped off these 40 custom-made supply baskets for farm workers, which included maseca, tortillas, cooking oil, potatoes, napkins, bleach, and also crafts for the kids. This group wanted to stay anonymous, but also had, made sure they shared this information and with their friends, and all of them also donated to 805 Undocu Fund. The county wants to give a big thank you to them and everyone in our community that has been reaching out to our Farm Worker Resource Program and also assisting our farm workers. Anyone that would like to donate food for our farm workers, please contact our Farm Worker Resource Program at 385-1899. That number again is 385-1899, and they will help coordinate the drop-off. We would also like to thank our area agency on aging and Victoria Jump and her team for helping us with the donation drop-offs.
Thank you very much. Supervisors, do you have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, John Turigosa.
Yes, Supervisors.
I want to thank, thank you, I want to thank Rosa, Talia, Fantima, and Esriyan for the good work they're doing, and also especially Ed Williams, our ag commissioner, for, for working out there, doing this excellent work that he does for the growers and the farm workers and Food Share. And I just want to commend the whole team, the Farm Worker, Farm Worker Resource Program for excellent work that they do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other supervisors? Rosa, please tell the team, just appreciate working with everybody, and thank you to those that are donating. We have Ventura County Community Foundation, that is the Recovery Relief Fund, we have the 805 Undocumented, there's just so many ways to give to our community, and we really do appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Thank you.
That's great work. Thank you, Rosa and team. Next up, we'll hear from Mike Pettit, our Assistant CEO, on our education task force.
Good morning. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Chair Long, members of the board. Just a brief update, first of all, on our education throughout the county. As you all know, that our campuses are closed, but I want to assure you that education is going on, both through distance learning, at home, online. I know personally in my own family and that my kids are about zoomed out with, with education, but that is happening in homes where there's no Wi-Fi access. Many school districts are providing Wi-Fi hotspots, and where that's just not practical or possible, there's not coverage. There's also actual educational materials being provide, provided. The school meals program is continuing at most districts as well. We encourage families looking for this information to contact their local district office and/or look at the local district office's website. Some individuals of the community may have questions about what's going on with graduation, what's going on with, with college testing, SATs, ACT tests, et cetera. There is information available at the Ventura County Office of Education, vcoe.org/fac, F-A-Q, frequently asked questions, and that information is out there to find out more information about that. The schools are actively monitoring for reopening in the fall. In fact, as part of the governor's area number five on businesses and education, we're working with the schools. In fact, we have a call today, our CEO Powers, and our team has a call with the education leaders today. K through 20 leaders on their fall plans. We're making sure that we have information on how they can safely protect.
Supervisors, if you could mute your phone if you're not speaking, that would be wonderful. I apologize. Sorry, Mike.
We're working with school leaders to learn information on how they can safely protect students as we reopen schools in the fall in preparation for the governor's reopening plans as well. So that work is ongoing. We're excited about that. The education is continuing, and we'll continue to keep that close coordination going with our educational leaders as, as we move forward. If there are no questions on education, I can move over to the, the business leaders' update.
Just a great sympathy to the families that are working at home and trying to work and educate their kids, and then some kids don't have, enjoy distance learning, and then also the promotions to the families because they're, they're virtual promotions now with the colleges and schools. So, just compassion to everybody for having to miss these special moments, but we'll make it special in just a different way.
Absolutely. It's, it will definitely be memorable.
Yes, you won't forget it.
All right. If no further questions about education, I'll move on to a quick business update, and then after I finish, we're going to have Ed Williams, our agricultural commissioner, come up and talk about the impacts on agriculture. First of all, I'd just like to share that we held, our CEO coordinated a call last Friday with our business leaders throughout the county. That included our local public health department, code enforcement, the economic development collaborative, women's economic ventures, workforce development board, the CETA, the chambers, the city economic development groups, and, and some owners of businesses around the county. We're looking to expand that input from other businesses around the county. But the focus of that conversation was, again, preparing for this reopening, looking at ways that businesses can keep their employees safe, keep the public safe, so we can continue to control that spread and get the remarkable efforts, not, keep those remarkable efforts that we've been working on happening here in our county. A few other notes on the business support. The Small Business Administration resumed accepting paycheck protection program applications yesterday. You may have seen some news this morning about some of the technical challenges. As you can imagine, the flood of applications has, has stressed that system. The federal government's working to, to resolve those as quickly as possible, so that work is ongoing. The last bill passed added an additional 310 billion in funding for that paycheck protection program, so, by the federal government, so that, that is eagerly being applied for, by many businesses throughout our nation. Additionally, our state opened up the pandemic unemployment assistance, known as PUA, program, and that supports self-employed or gig economy workers. That program opened up as well this week, and that is providing an additional 4.4 billion in our state since March 15th. Excuse me. The 4.4 billion was for unemployment claims since March 15th. So the GIG program has just opened up. A couple other notes about our state's effort, efforts with unemployment. The state has added nearly 2,000 additional staff to the unemployment hotline to help handle the unemployment claims. Last week, they received 15 million calls that came into the call center. And locally here in our county, since March 21st through April 18th, we've had 64,864 unemployment claims. That's from a workforce of approximately 424,100 individuals in our county. Happy to also report that our workforce development board just received a $450,000 grant for dislocated and underserved workers. That's to help some that, that just recently became dislocated and are underserved. They're still working out the details on that with the state. That money was just received yesterday. We received notification from that. So, many things going on, on the employment front, and your, our CEO, Mike Powers, and our county executive office are actively working with our business leaders and partners, so we are ready to reopen, and many businesses have already reopened since our last updated health order was released. So we're looking to continue that effort safely.
Thank you. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mike. And we also know that your board is actively engaging with the local businesses and chambers and sharing that feedback with us, and that is very helpful as well. And then again, these steps that we're talking about from a public health standpoint, working with these vulnerable populations, for example, seniors and, and the homeless, all of that are steps on our road to reopening and helping our local business community. So, with that, thank you, Mike, and let's hear now from our ag commissioner, Ed Williams.
Hi, hi. This is Bob Huber. I have a couple of.
You know, I didn't ask the supervisors for any questions or comments. Mike, if you can come back, I have a question or comment from Supervisor Huber.
Yes, we're allowing restaurants to reopen if they can provide, take out, or deliver. You know how many restaurants are not open?
So, thank you Supervisor. We have about 2,200 restaurants throughout our county. We have been looking on different cities. We know that 150 restaurants are advertising as open in the SEMI area. We have many other cities that are similarly advertising that their restaurants are open as well. We do not have a finite number, but we're working to track that information down. Additionally, as you heard from Victoria Jump, many of our small restaurants through this new program of providing meals to senior, have, seniors will have some opportunities to further open if they're not open today.
Any other questions Supervisor Huber?
Just one more.
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any idea how many businesses will not be able to open up even after we lift the orders and allow them to start back up again?
So, to date, that information is not yet known because of the various different support programs that we talked about with the, the paycheck protection program, the pandemic unemployment assistance program, and several others. So it's not yet known which of the businesses, even with those support programs, will be unable to open, and it also depends on the phased reopening plan from the governor. So, time is still moving forward, and we're working with these groups to, to coordinate as many services as possible, but that, that is difficult data to predict at this point.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Correct, and the governor had made an announcement of doing a stage one road to recovery, and they were going to provide a list of those types of businesses that would follow within that, and so we're waiting on that. We know we've gotten a lot of requests from companies as to manufacturing, or dog grooming, or hairdressers, or toy stores, bookstores, all sorts of different things that we have to still be in alignment with our state on those companies that are opening. So, I'm, it's hopefully going to be a really good week. It's gotta be better than, than nothing, right?
Yes, and we anticipate, the governor shared at his noon lunch briefing yesterday that he's going to be sharing more information about that, the business reopening today. So we hope to hear more about that staged opening plan.
Right, and, and it just shows light that we are focused on our economy. I read a report that was stating that the state unemployment was going to be maybe 16%. We've heard 22%, which is huge from 3.4%. IRS just had their update on their website today, was on the radio, stating that if you haven't received your stimulant check, to go online, don't get a phone call or something like that, but go online and check if you haven't received it, just as a boost to help the economy. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Long, and our chairwoman Long, sorry, and Mr. Powers and board members online. My name, for the record, is Ed Williams. I'm your county agricultural commissioner. Today, I wanted to cover a few issues related to agricultural business in Ventura County through this COVID-19 situation. Wanted to discuss the difficulties that farmers are facing, some of the programs that are available. Some of those programs have already been discussed by other speakers, Melissa and, and Mike have shared several of those programs at both the state and federal level. And then I wanted to touch on the effect on farm workers, which Rosa has, has gone over somewhat with you as well. The, just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that the impacts to the farms has a ripple effect throughout the entire food system that we have in both California and throughout the nation. California produces well over 50% of the fruits, fresh fruits and nuts that are consumed in the United States, and about 30 to 40% of the fresh vegetables that are produced throughout the United States. Huge impact, not just here locally, but throughout our country. Specifically, what, can we, let's see.
Yeah, there you go.
So we've had impacts to our crops, for our labor, to our markets. Distribution chains are severely impacted, not only, not only the farms. Consumers definitely have had some impacts from the, the crop situations here in Ventura County with COVID-19, and our food banks are also having some impacts. And then there's definitely going to be a, a long recovery period that is going to take some time to get through, to, to get us back on track and moving forward in the right direction. I'll give you a few for instances. Strawberries and raspberries are number one crop here in Ventura County. First two weeks of COVID-19 quarantine, the businesses were doing great, did really well, and part of that is because this is our peak season here in Ventura County for a lot of the different products that we have. Lemons, strawberries, celery, all of those products, this is the peak of the season for those crops here in Ventura. After about those first two weeks, though, there was a 25 to 40% drop in market price for strawberries. Part of that dealt with the food service industry, obviously, with restaurants closing and, and changing their business practices. That has impacted the fresh produce that's going to those businesses, as well as the social distancing requirements. You know, there aren't as many parties, there aren't as many weddings, there aren't as many celebrations. All of those things have impacts, particularly on some of the quote-unquote luxury type items. Strawberry is kind of a, a special product, special item that not everybody eats on a daily basis, and so it's a special thing that is used in a lot of, of parties and those types of things that has been impacted. Moving down to our next crop, lemons has been severely impacted in Ventura County. Right now, every packing house that, that has any cooler space is jammed to the gills. They've been picking lemons, fortunately, you can hold on to for, you know, a few weeks to even a couple of months in cold storage, once they're picked, and then, and then process them to, to serve the orders that go out. The problem is, there's no orders going out. Again, lemons are a very food service oriented crop. A lot of people like a little bit of lemon juice in their, in their tea or their lemonade and those kind of things, and so that has had a severe impact for the lemon industry. And right now, there's, this is the peak for the lemons, and lemons will hold on the tree for a little while, but they can't hold indefinitely, and so the longer they hold the. And so the longer they hold the lemon crop, the more mature the fruit gets, the more likelihood of decay and other types of problems setting in on those crops as we go. Avocados actually did fairly well for a little while, again, a couple of weeks. And then all of a sudden, they took a pretty significant drop, about a 25, 30% drop in market prices. But over the last two or three weeks, they seem to have stabilized. And so our avocado market seems to be doing fairly well right at the moment, and they're able to at least sustain that harvest and make a little bit of money there. For the vegetable crops, I, the picture you see on the, on the screen here, celery in particular is our third crop in the county. And the vegetable crops don't stop growing. Once they're planted, if the market turns soft, which it has, it did all right for a week or two initially, much like these other, these other crops. But then the market really dropped. And at this point, the market is hovering around the cost for harvesting the products. And the market orders have been severely reduced. And so the growers are having a hard time even scheduling. And so as you said, Chair Long, they've had to kind of postpone some of the planting and rethink the scheduling on, on some of the planting that's going on in the county. So they've actually skipped fully mature fields of celery and parsley and lettuce because there's no market to move that product. A lot of our growers have been extremely generous. They've gone ahead and harvested products and then donated to the food share, donated to the food banks. And they've been amazing that way. The, you know, contributions that are going to help people that are going without food right now. So big effort going with that. Part of the problem with that, and one of the new programs, is the Food to Families Program, which is working with food banks, working with wholesale distributors and, and others to repackage boxes of produce. It's difficult to take an entire truckload of celery straight to the food bank. What do you do with, you know, 1,000 boxes of 50-pound crates of celery? You know, not, not everybody can eat that unless you have a lot of peanut butter. That might help too. But, but those are some of the things that are logistical issues. And so the new USDA program that's going to allow for the RFPs will have to help coordinate between the producers and the companies that can distribute, repackage and distribute that product for the food banks to make sure that it's usable for, for the public. Another area that has really been significantly impacted is our cut flower industry. We have a good cut flower industry. It's perennially number five or number six in the county for our crop list. They've been struggling for several years now, just for survival, with competition from South America in particular. And so with this COVID-19 situation, a lot of flowers are used in the spring. A lot of weddings are, you know, were curtailed, you know, Easter time. A lot of these types of, of, you know, gatherings have, have stopped. And so the whole cut flower industry has suffered some significant impacts from that. One thing that we were kind of surprised with is that nursery industry, at least for shipments within the state of California, has been doing fine. They're continuing to move product, and, and that seems to be moving pretty well. I think a lot of people are staying at home and doing a little bit of gardening. So maybe that's a good thing in some of those, in some of those things. Our produce stands and farmers' markets seem to be doing fairly well. Produce stands especially are looking at up to 50% increase in their sales. People love to go to the, to the farm stands and get produce straight from the farmer. That's an ideal, you know, idyllic situation for a lot of people. Farmers' markets had to close down a lot of extraneous food service types of crafts and those kind of things. So they've taken a little bit of a cut, about 10 to 20% overall cut. But the produce vendors seem to be doing fairly well in the farmers' markets at this time. Our cattle industry, believe it or not, we do have a pretty, pretty good cattle industry here in Ventura County. Most of it's cow calf operations that raise the, you know, raise young cows, then sell them off to stockyards, which in turn sell them to the packers. Well, as you've been hearing in the media lately, the meat packers are having to shut down because of the COVID-19, you know, sickness issues. And so that's shut down a significant part of the cattle processing, the, the whole livestock processing industry throughout the country. And so our cattle industry are having to hold on to their cattle. The market dropped from about $1.80 a pound down to about $1.30 a pound. And so they're having to hold on to their calves and not moving them. So another impact that we're seeing from that, fortunately, we had a great spring. Lots of good rain, especially late rain. And there's some good pasture and good, good, good feed out there to keep, to continue to keep the animals healthy. As I said, the wholesale distributors and our exporters are also being impacted. Not as much produce is, is being purchased, and so not as much produce is being distributed. And so our port, as you've seen some reports lately, has slowed down somewhat, a little bit there at Port Wainimi. Both the incoming shipments and the shipments that are going out. We certify about 15,000 to 16,000 shipments a month. No, excuse me, 15,000 to 1600 shipments a month. I need to make sure I have my, my numbers right there. But we've had a reduction of about 25% of those shipments that are being sent to other countries and other states that our office has been certifying. A big part of that is due to the transportation, the availability of ships to transport. The markets are soft. But a big part of it also is the airline industry that has basically shut down. And a lot of the very perishable products that we produce getting shipped by air so that they arrive in a, in a good, fresh condition. So that's been, that's been cut down somewhat as well. And then I couldn't leave without a discussion about the impacts on farm labor. As you can tell, with the 25 to 30% impacts on our, on our agricultural production, there has to be a corresponding 25 to 40% reduction in labor that's available to our farm workers. And that has made a significant impact on, on their livelihoods and their ability to survive. And so very important, the, the safety net programs that are in place to help keep people, you know, least treading water are extraordinarily important. And it's important that we keep, trying to keep those programs safe, healthy as well. Farmers have had to readjust the way they think and the way they operate in the fields, you know, trying to keep the farm workers safe. The masks, the transportation issues, the whole social distancing, all of those kind of things. Staggering break times, all of those things. And farmers have been doing a great job of rethinking the way they operate to try to keep their workers safe. And I have to commend our growers and our, the employers in this county for the thoughtful process that they've gone through to take care of those things. Again, there are a couple of programs that have been mentioned. The Food to, Food to Families Program is a great opportunity. It's going to provide somewhere in the neighborhood of 310, or excuse me, $3 billion nationwide, about $100 million per month for fresh produce. Also for meat and dairy products, about $100 million a month for a while. And a lot of that is a matter of organizing and figuring out how to coordinate those efforts to get the food from the traditional marketing chains to the new recipients. And then the, the Paycheck Protection Program also. Farmers, through the Small Business Administration, are now eligible to participate in that program as well. And so I know that there are several growers that are looking to try to take advantage of that. So that's all I have for you today. Appreciate the time that you've allowed me, and please let me know if you have any questions.
I will at this time open it up for our supervisor comments or questions. Any supervisors on Zoom with questions?
I have a.
Supervisor Huber.
What are some of the obstacles for farmers to donate to food banks?
I'm sorry.
Could you repeat that, please Supervisor Huber? I couldn't quite hear you.
What are some of the obstacles for farmers to donate to food banks?
Part of it is a matter of the food banks being able to handle the type of packaging and, and processing that the, that our farmers are currently, you know, set up to, to how they're currently set up to operate. For instance, we had one grower that told us about sending actually several truckloads of celery to food banks, to food share. And it's difficult for them to distribute entire 50-pound cartons to the, to the recipients. And so those things have to be repackaged into smaller, you know, types of multi, multiple product packages. And so it's just a matter of spending a little extra time and a little extra effort in processing that product to make it available to the, to the recipients.
Any other questions supervisors?
I just, this is Bob Huber again.
Yes.
I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Ed Williams for a very thorough report. Farming and the Agriculture Committee means so much to Ventura County. And although farming is an essential business activity, farmers and farm workers are not frequent feeling negative effects of feeling widespread unemployment and the needed closure of restaurants and other places farmers count on to purchase their produce. It's important that we continue to monitor the wellbeing of our farmers and those that work in our agriculture industry. And then to Mike Powers, do we have any representatives from the agriculture industry on the business calls? If not, can we look to add representation from the Farm Bureau and the Ventura County Agriculture Association to the business call lines?
Thank you Supervisor, excellent question. We do have the chambers, obviously, but we will, it's an excellent suggestion. We will add John Crist, for example.
Thank you. And also, it makes me think of the processing. So we have fresh vegetables, and yet they can't be processed in the county to be utilized for our community. Looks like there's some opportunities for us here in Ventura County to be able to process that and give it to the end user. What we're finding also is the purchasing patterns of our community are, have varied, right? So many people after two weeks went to buying all the things that are on the shelf, all the dry food, all the canned food, making sure that they have their storage in case they couldn't go out to go shopping. I mean, we saw the spree of toilet paper. There's probably boatloads of toilet paper in everyone's house. But that didn't give the fresh fruit and vegetables that our community needs. And so now the question is, what, what can they afford? Like we are importing pineapples in from the port, but those pineapples and pinealopes aren't really selling because those are a higher product, price product. So we have to look at now, what, how do we change and how do we survive this COVID-19 with our farmers? And so it really urges us to, to look at every way we can to, if it's processing, getting it to the food banks and so forth, so that we keep our local food here and we keep our community fed. I think that's the real driver on this one. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. And next up, we'll have a report on communications from our County Public Information Officer, Ashley Batista.
Chair Long, supervisors on Zoom. Mr. Powers here with a brief update on communication. We continue to host three press conferences a week on Monday, Wednesday, Friday at 1:00 PM. Those press conferences are streamed live on our social media platforms. They're on News Channel 3, Spectrum 1, ABC 7, and NBC 4. They were also on public television and VC Emergency. I encourage our community to tune in for important updates on the efforts. There's also an expansion of what's talked about today each of those days. Great way to get more information. We also have a daily radio update at 6:20 AM, right with the sunrise, on KBTA 1590. Residents can also sign up for a daily email message for updates at VC Emergency. You simply scroll down to the bottom of the page, click Subscribe, and you get a daily update with important information. We provide updates throughout the day on all social media platforms. We encourage our community members to join us on Instagram, Facebook, both in English and Spanish, Twitter, Nextdoor, as well as our website. These pages offer an opportunity to receive information and to also ask important questions. If residents have questions about resources and they are not on social media, they can also call 211-247. We have placed resource information ads in all publications throughout the county, in both English and in Spanish. The Farm Worker Resource Program, as Rosa indicated, has different ways that they are also conducting outreach. One important thing that they are doing is using WhatsApp. WhatsApp is extremely important for those residents that speak Mixteco because it is not a written language. For those that aren't familiar with WhatsApp, you can send a video or voice message. So it's a great way to communicate in that manner. We also have partnerships with, for example, the Independent Living Resource Center, and they are hosting Zoom meetings on Fridays. This is another great way for our community members to stay connected during this time. Community members can also visit, as Dr. Johnson indicated, WellnessEveryDay.org. It's a great opportunity to learn about support groups in our county. There are online support groups, phone-in support groups. During a time when people are apart, this is a great way for our community members to stay connected. And we're really encouraging residents to do that. We appreciate the generosity of our community, as shown today in the image of those laundry baskets filled with goods. We have many residents that want to continue to support. If you can't support, there's a Donate tab on our website, VCEemergency.com. Go to the Donate tab. If you would like to volunteer during this time, there's also a Volunteer tab, or you can go to VolunteerVenturaCounty.org. There is a list of needs for our farm workers and others on that site. We understand that not everyone can give at this time. So if you do want to give in a different way, it's really important that you extend some kindness on social media to your neighbors. Give someone that you haven't talked to in a long time a call. It really is impactful during this time. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you supervisors. Any questions for Ashley?
I would just like to compliment Ashley. We do get emails from a lot of individuals, and they are so thankful for the VCEemergency.com website specifically. I have one here that says, "I've looked at online statistical presentations in other cities and counties, but I don't think any is as complete and user-friendly as Ventura County." Many sites, you have to search for the numbers, but on Ventura County, they are first and foremost. It's probably not an important, but if you get a chance to pass on my gratitude to the people in charge, please do. And she says, "Every morning I get up and check the VC Emergency site to see how we're doing." So just passing on those kudos, I know it has been also a major teamwork effort to do that, but keeping it up to date, and now, you know, people can actually get emails sent to them of the updates daily. I just really appreciate that good work. People trust that that good information is there, and it's great to have it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. And a shout out to OES for that dashboard with all of those great graphs and information. We really appreciate the teamwork on that site.
Right, thank you. Any other supervisors?
I did have a question for you. In thinking about the internet, and we have many different ways in which we're trying to reach people. And I was wondering if it's important to do a mailing to all the households, like we've done, the federal has done for the census, but to send them our resource page. We have that one quick page that has all the different resources in, that you could like stick on your refrigerator or buy your own. like stick on your refrigerator or by your office or something so that you can have that information, because not everyone pays attention to us, I have to admit. I know we get a lot of hits, but people are busy. And so I'm wondering if that's something that we can do. The other thing is to touch piece on our healthcare system. So touching on the testing, where to go to find your information on testing, making sure they understand that our hospitals and our health cares are secure and safe places to go to, so that people know that they should be working with preventative. I just wanted to ask that. I'm not directing you to, but I'd like you to think about it just as we're doing our daily business. I think it's something very important to make sure we're reminding people. And if we do have the budget with the CARES Act or wherever there can be, so that our public is more informed, I just think it's better, because we're already at seven weeks, and I didn't hear things changing tomorrow. And as we get this stretched out, there's just going to be more people wanting it. And I just think it would be something good to send out. So if you could just think about that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you so much. All of the ads right now that are in all the publications throughout the county have the resource page in those ads, so in all the publications in both English and Spanish. And then we're working with the hospital to develop some videos to really market our hospital services, because the hospitals are a safe place to go right now. And even during this meeting, I had some hospital officials sending messages of housekeepers and others who are behind the scenes doing such great work, just saying thank you for their service, and we'll be promoting that on our social media platforms as well. So we'll look into a mailer and how we can make that happen too.
And then also, I just really appreciate the information that's being sent out as the press releases, because I know that our media is also letting go of some of their reporters and so forth. So to actually get truthful, good information out to our public is important, and so that all of our departments are really working on that. I just want to say thank you, because it does take time and effort to get that information out, and it's just, you can see it works so well, and I appreciate that. I did see Supervisor Parks, did you have another comment?
Just to tag on to what you said, there are different agencies of the county that do regular mailings or associated with it. For example, our Water Works Districts, so there may be an opportunity, if there is some kind of small flyer, we can put in with the regular mailings that go out anyway, like with the billings, that might be a way to do it less expensively.
Great. We'll look into that.
Thank you very much. I really do appreciate all the great work and collaboration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ashley. Next up, we'll hear from our HR Director, Sean Otten, on our workforce update.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm Sean Otten, you're Human Resources Director. And today, I, we've heard a lot, and you mentioned it, seven weeks. I just wanted to mention that it seems to me that your workforce has adapted and adjusted to the new environment in these seven weeks. We have many people on telecommuting, those who can, of course. And I've just personally learned how to Zoom and Skype and have never been so technologically adept in my life, but I see many other people also really social distancing by leveraging their technology. Your workforce, again, my impression is highly functional. It is just a dedicated and committed group of people. So more specifically, I'm pleased to report to you today that we're working with, as the healthcare agency and the Public Health Department specifically ramp up to test more individuals, we're exploring and partnering with them on their staffing needs and the needs that they have as far as disaster service workers to learn the new terminology, tracers. Those are the people who, when someone is COVID positive, trace all their contacts and thereby help curb the spread of COVID. So those are, some of those functions are perfect, the disaster service workers, our own employees reassigned from other departments. So we're exploring, I think the need that they've expressed so far is about 50, and the need will go on for a while, so we anticipate multiple cohorts of individuals being put to work in that respect. So we'll be in the next few days in touch with department heads who we think have the right resources to help in this effort for reassignment. We're also working with Ashley and Rosa Gonzalez, our community liaisons, and they have real contacts with the community-based organizations, and we're still working to assess the needs of those community-based organizations. Also, Melissa Livingston's in touch with United Way, I know. So we're working to see what needs they have and how we can gel that so that we can redeploy some of our individuals. But on the whole, I think on a more regular basis, we are in contact with not only our departments but with our labor groups. I reported to you last week, and, you know, the absence of any disagreements is really notable. I think we are all, we're all on the same page on the whole and moving forward, and we're taking proactive and prudent steps as we go forward, and I'm pleased to say that there's general consensus. We continue to be in touch with our employees. We've, in the last few days, distributed 3,500 cloth masks for those who would like to use them. We also have enhanced our screening. We have over 20 buildings, we have well over 20 buildings down where temperature screening is taking place. And we, I think on the whole, everyone's following the protocols of social distancing, but we'll be sending out communication in the next couple of days, kind of reiterating and affirming some of the more general public health orders and customizing to county-specific directions. So that's the end of my report. I'm happy to take any questions that you may send my way. Thank you very much.
Supervisors, any questions? I do appreciate the access to technology also. It's very hard to do our work without that technology and the Zooming and learning all that different technology. So I just appreciate it. We're work using it today.
And two months ago, never heard of Zooming.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom, Zoom.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you Chair Long and board members. So one last item, just touch on our budget update. So for our county budget, we did send out our target budgets last week. Of course, we are on a fiscal year that begins July 1, and we will come back to your board at the end of the first quarter when we have more information. We did receive our CARES funding for the county. Recall, there's other buckets for like healthcare funding separately, but for the county funding, we did receive our check last week for about 147 million plus. We just received the guidance late, last week and are reviewing it. In essence, it's for COVID-related expenses but that are not already budgeted. So I'll touch on that more, but just for some examples include medical and public health needs, testing, acquisition of PPE, telemedicine, emergency medical transport, and establishing temporary facilities. Revenue replacement is currently not permissible. Other items that are included, public health order compliance expenses such as food delivery to residents, distance learning, technological improvements, care for the homeless population, and paid and family leave and sick leave to public employees. So that's just to give you a sense, there is a bill that's being worked on. The most recent one was CARES 3.5. The CARES 4.0 bill is being worked on, and one of the reasons counties are asking for flexibility is in order to sustain and enhance the county's capacity to deliver on these federal programs that are being funded through these programs, through these CARES Act reimbursements. And so those are programs like CalWorks, Medi-Cal, food stamps, job training, and so forth. So we want to be able to maintain our capacity to deliver on those programs, and it's hard to do that when we see that the sales tax and the realignment funds are going to be going down, and that's going to impact our budget. So we know you're advocating, your board is at the federal and state level to help with that, and we really appreciate that. And so I think this next week to 10 days is going to be a critical period in that. To give you a sense of costs to date, and this is just preliminary, really mostly OES costs, we're still gathering from some other areas, but it's about $4 million COVID-related expenses to date. We have received, the healthcare agency has received about 10 million of funding through other CARES Act funding, mostly for, through the clinics for federally qualified healthcare and their Medicare allocation. And we will keep you posted, and again, appreciate your advocacy on that, and appreciate your board's support and engagement overall, and the community's support and engagement as we work through this unprecedented time together. Thank you.
Supervisors, do you have any questions? Well, and like Mr. Powers stated, we are working very hard with our state and federal counterparts to make sure that we have the budget. I know that the Assembly Budget, some committee is discussing the economic stability and stimulus. There's just a lot going on this state. May 4th are going to come back and realign, so we're on calls all the time to really understand what they're looking at and also to provide them data, to make sure that they have the information from us so they can see where the flex or no flex is. So I do appreciate everyone's hard work on this. Thank you. So with that, I think that concludes our COVID-19 update, but we still have a lot of other business still to get on with it. So I'll open it up now to the board comments. Thank you again for everyone. Board comments, we'll start with Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. I just, again, like always, I want to thank our CEO's office. Thank all our staff that is involved in the daily COVID-19 updates. And I'll thank all the first responders. I know we share this all the time, but it's so important that we share this with them. I want to thank our doctors, our nurses, our studio's office, our firefighters, our agency directors, our administrators, all our frontline essential members of our county. And also, I want to thank the CBOs, the Farm Worker Program, and also want to thank clinicians. I've heard them on the radio and I heard them on TV, and also sharing the, how essential it is to follow the COVID-19 guidelines. And also, for anyone that I've missed, thank you for helping 24/7 during the pandemic. And additionally, and most of all, I want to thank our residents, our constituency, for following the CDC, our state, and federal and county COVID-19 health order guidelines. I think it's extremely important. I'm going to thank them, as we saw over the weekends, on our beaches and distancing, and just thank everybody for helping out that makes Ventura County come up to the spotlight and up to the top. You know, as I mentioned earlier today, we've been commended by CNN and other LA stations for being the leaders and following the COVID-19 guidelines. And I want to say again to our public, stay healthy, stay safe, stay home, and save lives. I want to thank you for that, and also, more members like to adjourn in memory of the people and the list that I'll give the clerk. Thank you so much.
Thank you Supervisor Zaragoza. Next up is Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you very much. I wanted to just talk about one sad thing. Excuse me here, I'm trying to get my, there we go. I just wanted to talk about one sad thing, and that is the fact that we lost Carl Novak. And I think we all know how passionate Carl was about being a great service to the constituents of Ventura County and citizens of Ventura County. He passed away peacefully this Saturday morning with his wife, Wendy by his side, and the family's going to hold a memorial service after the COVID panic is over. He retired from the Watership Protection District after 15 years, and from that resolution that we presented to the Board of Supervisors, I read these things, and I'd like to just read them again if I could to you. That was, "Dr. Novak is known to be a lover of the environment. He always delivered with innovative thought to improve mission success. He brought this enthusiasm to the public works agency and most notably to the Watership Protection District's operations and maintenance divisions, where he picked up where others left off to scientifically test, analyze, and peer review, and improved earth and lemon and bank protection concept utilizing raptors and owls instead of pesticide base stations. Carl's Raptor program earned the agency's first-ever California State Association of Counties Challenge Merit Award in 2018, and the 2018 Ventura County Chapter of American Public Works Association Project of the Year for the Raptor Pilot Study in the environmental category. He worked hard with our office and the county executive office to end homelessness in Ventura and Santa Clara Rivers. He brought exceptional professional knowledge and logistical resources and approached this work with compassion for those in difficult circumstances, always speaking with passion and empathy for those less fortunate. And so I just want to have us all recognize the loss of just one of the stellar county employees, and we really ache for his wife and his family at this point in time. Thank you very much. Those are all my comments, my other adjourned memories we have submitted to the court. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments Supervisor Bennett. Next up is Supervisor Huber.
Thank you. I want to start my comments with letting all of our county staff know just how impressed and how proud I am of all of you. These are extremely trying times, and the compassion and care for the public that I am seeing from each and every department is amazing. I may not always agree with what the state and the county have to say, but I want Ventura County residents to know how much you all care. Thank you for your hard work. Secondly, I'd like to take just a moment to focus on some of my priorities at this time. Each of our districts are unique, and I know that we all have different perspectives on this battle we are fighting. First and foremost, the highest priority will always be the health and safety of our public, our citizens. Along with their physical health, I really want to keep their mental health as part of this equation as this pandemic continues. I know from personal experience the impact of financial worries. I've had personal friends over the years who have taken their own lives when faced with money problems. I want us all to stay sensitive to that stressor too while we are fighting this pandemic along with the anxiety, depression, and isolation that there is out there. I commend our incredibly hardworking CEO, Mark Powers, Mike Powers, for working with the EDC and our local chambers of commerce on the economic impacts of these trying times. I think the county should continue working with our local business owners on our economic recovery. Frankly and sadly, some of our businesses may not be around when this pandemic is over. As a former Chamber of Commerce President here in the county, I know firsthand the effectiveness of the chamber, but I also know that all businesses are unique. We need that guidance now for our business owners. We often say how well we positioned our county as to address many challenges. So let's get the business owner's input now while we're still paving this road to recovery. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much Supervisor Huber. Supervisor Parks?
Yes, thank you. Just think about how many people have stepped in this crisis, and I wanted to call out a couple. We have a nonprofit out in the Caneo Valley called Adelante Comunidad Caneo, and they have been taking food to the children of the school district who can't go to the distribution center and bringing food every day to them and their families, some 100 children plus another 50 families. And just really appreciate the volunteers for getting together just to do that. We also know about the Safe Passage Program that our former police chief here in Thousand Oaks is doing with the at-risk youth. But also, obviously, we are so grateful particularly to the first line, you know, the healthcare workers, the folks in the grocery stores, our grocery store workers, our transit workers, our postal workers, you know, just so many people who are still essential and needing to be out there and being, working with the public. And so our thanks to them has to come with doing all we can to do that social distancing, to wear the mask where you can, and then also looking at, as our Chair, Supervisor Long, has been out there going to each one of these press briefings that we do three times a week, and really appreciate her doing that. Thank you for that and thank you for your leadership during this time. I also wanted to appreciate Darren Kettle, who is the Executive Director of the Ventura County Transportation Commission, who wrote a really thought-provoking op-ed in the VC Star. And one of the points, a major point that he made is that right now, there's no traffic because no one's driving. A lot of us are able to work at home, thankfully. And he said that everybody just worked at home one day And he said that everybody just worked at home one day a week when we get back to going. That will reduce 20% of the traffic. And I think we are finding through technology that we are able, a lot more able than we thought, to be able to work from home and be very productive. And while we're at home, I know we are spending a lot of our emphasis that because it's a stressful time for so many people, but it's also a time that we have more time to reflect, to be home and exercise, for example. Just thinking about the hours spent every day normally when we're working out in the, you know, society, you know, a lot of time spent driving that car and those kind of things. Now you have time where you're not doing that, and you can reach out to friends, and hopefully, people can use that to actually better themselves as they can. One thing that you can do is goodwill is still accepting donations. They have bins outside in the back, and you can just put your donations in there. And so it's a good time to clean out your shelves and have those donations go to a good cause in the future. So just want to give my thanks to people who are working hard for all of us and wishing everyone the best. I know we all want to get back to normal, but just hopefully we can also appreciate what we have here too, which I do. Thank you.
Thank you very much Supervisor Park. Really do appreciate those comments. Now my turn. As Supervisor Parks stated, I've been at every press conference since we've started making sure that our community knows that our elected officials are working with all our different departments and all our different elected officials from the local to the federal side. It's been an honor to serve with CSAC, which is our California State Association of Counties, working with them and all the urban counties in advocating for the community. I know there's a lot of frustration out there, either for wanting to stay home and keep everyone safe, or wanting to get back to work. There's pros and cons in every level, and it's very hard to make these decisions. So I want to make sure people know that these decisions are not made lightly, and that we really do appreciate everyone's feedback. And we'd also like to ask for ways that we can do better. So if you're a dog groomer, how can you do your service better and keep our community safe? We've asked that of our real estate association, and they provided guidelines to us. We've asked that from our groceries association, and they have done that. I've gotten it from our carpenters that are out there building what steps they do to separate for lunch and do things. I think we are better as a whole, working together, than against each other. And so I really appreciate all the good feedback that we're getting. I know myself, my office, our directors, our board members are getting those. And I really want to stress thank you, because we are here to work together. That's the only way we're going to do this and get past this pandemic. So I appreciate everyone's frustrations, and I just wanted to turn it to more of an optimistic way of how can we get moving? How can we get to working together to really change what we do? Because life is not normal anymore. It's a new normal. And so what is that new normal? Let's be together and work on that. And with that, I had a little video of things that we are doing as the new normal, it seems like, for the last seven months, or seven weeks, seven months. That'd be scary. Seven weeks. And this was something, we talked a lot about volunteering, and if they can get it, it's got orchids. And so who doesn't love to have flowers sent to them or given to them? Because I know, I love it. Let's see if they can have it, because it was just a special, maybe they can't bring it up. I just want to see, you'll probably see it on Facebook, but the Dream Foundation's Flower Empowerment Program contacted our very own Amy Towner with the Healthcare Foundation of Ventura County yesterday morning at 8:00, and their partner with Westerley Orchids and Carpenteria had orchid plants that needed to be donated that day. And so she jumped on it yesterday and triaged with her volunteers 1,200 orchids to be driven, to be in a drive, you could either drive by, walk by, or bike by, a VCMC campus for doctors, nurses, staff at Ventura County Medical Center, the Academy Family Medical Center Building, inpatient psychiatry hospital, CRT, and medical examiners. And we got the video going, and it kind of just shows you how everything was displayed and provided to, to say thank you. And then also to let people know that on Wednesday, there will be delivering the same beautiful orchids to our Santa Paula Hospital, our Behavioral Health, and our Public Health. This is our community stepping up in so many different ways to help uplift our community and get us past this pandemic. So I just wanted to highlight that special thing as we're all working together to get past this. And I have internments that I've already provided, so thank you very much. And so now with that, I will pass it on to Mr. Mike Powers.
Thank you Chair Long and Board members, and Supervisor Bennett, really appreciate your comments about Carl. Such a sweet, wonderful man, and such a great, kind colleague. He'll be dearly missed and always part of our county family. And I want to recognize also everybody's great work here on the census. Right now, just some numbers, right now, we're one of the top 10 counties in the state in our response, 61.9%. We're actually number five in the state. So great work happening, but we're not done until we get to 100%. So we'll keep doing that, and appreciate it's truly a community effort. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that goes on for our board comments and our CEO comments. We will now move to our regular agenda items. The first one up is item number 17. Victoria Jump is coming down from VC AAA.
Good afternoon. So this item is, we received a contract, well, two contracts with the state California Department of Aging. One is for our Aging and Disability Resource Center Program of the amount of 781,626, and the other is for our Fall Prevention Program and the amount of 143,750. For the second one, Senator Jackson was instrumental in obtaining this, and this is part of one of the bills that she carried last year for us. So I ask for your approval to accept these contracts, but also to establish the two positions that go along with the Aging and Disability Resource Center Program. So this is really for our call center. It's a no wrong door approach where people can come in any way and connect with us. There are the people that are receiving all the calls now for requests for food and assistance.
Thank you Supervisor Zaragoza. Bob Huber?
Forward move approval?
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second Zaragoza.
It's been motioned by Supervisor Huber and second by Supervisor Zaragoza. If there's no further...
And Madam Chair, I want to thank, I want to thank Victoria Jump, because I think that Fall Prevention Program is an excellent program for the community. Thank you for that. I'll second that.
It is. I would agree. And I'm so excited that the state wants to use us as their master plan. I have to keep boasting about that because it's amazing, and you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I will have a roll call for this vote. It's been first...
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes. So the motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item is our CEO's office, number 18. Mr. Otten?
Good morning again Supervisor Long, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. Again, I'm Sean Otten, your Human Resources Director, and I'm before you today to recommend that your board authorize the authorization for payment of straight overtime, straight time overtime to classified employees for a limited number of salaried employees who would otherwise be exempt from overtime payment. These employees have shown extraordinary commitments to serving the community in a direct response to the COVID-19 pandemic that we are facing. We recommend only those hours that are worked in excess of 20 hours in a pay period. So that means for an average 40-hour employee, they've already worked 10 hours above and beyond their schedule. The period we recommend covering is March 12th, the beginning of the local emergency order through to the end of the, of the emergency order. This recommendation is anticipated to impact approximately 60 employees who are salaried. These individuals, along with their colleagues, work primarily in the offices of Office of Emergency Services, Fire Protection District, Public Health, the hospitals, ambulatory care clinics, Human Services Agency, Area Agency on Aging, as well as a few others. And these are direct frontline employees who've provided such services as testing for COVID, tracing employees, planning for the surge, communicating, and providing services to the vulnerable populations. So they've been called upon basically to perform these services, and they've really stepped up to the plate in the hour of need, primarily because in this very short time period, we're really not able to hire such experienced and specialized employees with such specialized skills, hire them, train them, onboard them, and get them in place to meet the needs of the community in this short period of time. So during this surge, they've had to really put in exceptional hours. And I, basically the cost for this recommendation that we have at this point through the end of June 30th would be $285,000. We do anticipate the cost for this through the end of the emergency order to decrease with time as the need diminishes, unless of course, there's another surge. By way of background, there is recent precedence for your board having done such a measure with the Thomas and Woolsey Fires, as well as the borderline tragedy. Again, to be clear, this is for 60 or so employees. I personally did a, phoned approximately 10 or so agencies to get a feel for what they have. It's frontline workers, and only those employees who've worked 20 hours above their regularly scheduled time. They are represented and nonrepresented employees, so this recommendation does cover CNA, the California Nurses Association, the SEIU, VEA. Each of those memorandum of agreement have a clause in their contract that allows for this straight time overtime payment with your board's approval, as well as the management and unrepresented employees. Appointing authorities of each department have the responsibility to ensure that the time is logged and that it's directly related to the COVID response, and that they need to approve it. With that, I think I'm available to answer any questions that you may have and any items that Mr. Powers...
Supervisor Bennett, did you have a question? You're on the screen. No.
No, I did not.
Sorry, it wasn't muted. Apologize. Mr. Powers?
Thank you Chair Long. Thank you. I think Sean said it really well, but we really wanted to pinpoint these employees, and Sean and the team did that. And these are folks who are working, you know, seven days a week and have been during this unprecedented time, because that's what it takes, and they have specialized skill to do it. We're fortunate that they're willing to do it, and they have the training and the commitment to do it. And so, yeah, and as you say, we, there's no way to go find more people to do this work because of their specialized training. And so they're making things happen, just looking at the homeless shelters 24/7, seven days a week. So, and appreciate your board considering it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, I agree, we had this in the Thomas fire and so forth, and this is at seven weeks, and we're still continuing. Hopefully, the work will decrease for our staff, because we know that stress of overworking and not taking some rest time is hard on our employees. We see that with our first responders and our medical team as well. So I just appreciate you bringing this in. I need to get a motion to approve this.
Madam Chair Zaragoza, I approve, and I want to thank all the employees, the 24/7 employees that are helping us out, and thank Sean Otten and the CEO's office. I can make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second from Parks.
Thank you. It's been first by Supervisor Zaragoza and second by Supervisor Parks. Is there any further discussion or comments? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes, yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes. So that motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much for bringing it forward. Our next item is Correspondence, which is 19 through 28. It is extremely unfortunate when you see this list of items, but these are the Warren Reports, which if someone doesn't know, it's the Service Regarding a Notice Pursuant to the Worker Adjustment and Retainment Notification Act. So those for a mass layoff to facilities and so forth. So I need to get a motion to approve this correspondence agenda.
No moves?
Thank you. It's been first by Supervisor Parks. Can I get a second, please?
Second, second.
That was Supervisor Huber, I believe. Okay, second by Supervisor Huber. And any further discussions? All in, well, roll call, please.
That's approving 19 through 28 of the correspondence agenda. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes. So that motion is approved. Thank you very much. I would like to make a comment about our public comments. Just so people know, any public comments that we received on either item eight, which is public comments not on the agenda, or item 11, we have three letters for a public comment on the COVID-19, those will be put into the record. We appreciate everyone's public comments. If we can get Zoom in for all the public, that would be great, but we need to be following our rules and regulations of our county council. So I appreciate everyone's concerns, and we are being as transparent as we possibly can with all the steps. And if things change, we will let you know. But until then, please email at clerkoftheboard@ventra.org for any comments associated with our meetings, and we will have our next meeting. I know, because COVID-19 is not gone, we'll be here back next Tuesday at 8:30. And also, please tune in to our public comments, our press conferences on Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays at 1:00. And also, go to vcemergency.com in case you missed anything. You could re-watch this or just go to the source of information you want. Thank you so much for everyone, and keep safe and social distance. So thank you. That adjourns our meeting.